This is the time we've been looking for. We want the meeting started, and we'll have an invocation by Mayor Portim, Noel, and so delicious flag by Councilwoman Hernandez. Please stand.
Bow his most heavenly gracious father, we come for you once again to say thank you. Thank you for waking us all up this morning and through this glorious day. Father God, we ask that you watch over each and every one as if we go through our meeting this afternoon, this evening, and that you continue to bless those that are here and those that are on their way. Father God, we ask that you put your loving arms around those that are sick and that need your touching, healing hands. Father God, we ask that you bless those that are on their way and those that are trying to get here. We ask to send you all your blessings. Amen.
Amen.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before we begin tonight's closed session, I need to state that council member Cruz will be joining by Zoom utilizing the reasonable accommodation under Attorney General's Opinion 23-1002. And with that, roll call is complete and all members are present.
Excellent. Okay. I have a few readings I must do here. Participation is invited. If you wish to rehearse on any of the items on the agenda, please solicit by phone ID speaker of his card and hand it to the city clerk. This is prior to the agenda being addressed, item being addressed. If special accommodations are required or were necessary, a 48-hour notice must have already been given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics. As your elected governor and board, we will remember the code of ethics that you voluntarily announce, we approve. During this meeting, we will treat each other in the public with patience, civility, and courtesy, expecting the same return from the public. The decision made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Public comment, closed session. This is the time and place for the general public to address the governing board on matters on the closed session agenda and within the city jurisdiction. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes or less. Our request to speak must be received prior to the item being addressed. If special accommodations were required, a 48-hour notice must have been given to the city clerk. City clerk?
Yes, our first speaker is Mr. John Williams.
The Honorable Mr. Williams, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. It says, don't move the mic. We paid 50 grand not to move the mic. Another lawsuit, or potential lawsuit. This is getting ridiculous. This is absolutely getting ridiculous. We're going to continue fighting these lawsuits, spending tons of money you really don't have to spend. Could have solved some of these lawsuits a long time ago when you just would have settled. But we keep fighting this. What I can't figure out is why in the heck is the council allowing it to go on? We'll just end it. Stop it. Let's start. Let's get this thing done. Let's get it cleaned up, and let's start. I don't get it. You know, the other thing is, I made a comment the last council meeting, and I said something about the chief going back to chief, and he smiled and kind of looked a little bit, and I caught that look. I didn't get it. I got it now. I got it now. What I can't understand is, why didn't you do this two months ago? Why now? Could have done it last month, month before that. You know what the perception looks like, though, is that it looked like the perception is that maybe we're trying to get this rushed through really quickly, but the public doesn't, we don't know. All we see is this on the agenda. All we see is this being done, hasn't been done prior months before this, and now it's up. I didn't catch it, but I knew that look was, and that smile from the chief was good. I missed it. I missed it. I'm usually pretty good at that stuff, but I didn't figure that one out. But you guys go ahead and rush this thing through. Make you feel better. The question I'm going to ask you guys over and over and over is why now? Why wasn't it done a month ago, two months ago?
Thank you for sharing there, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. Weisma.
Welcome, Mr. Weisma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is on item two, on the police chief. I'm real concerned that he called me essentially a liar. He said I was 100% bogus the other night, which is not true. I was 100% accurate. The police never did come to me to get information on the crime that I saw in progress. Not once, anytime. Now, if Diane Burns was still a police chief, she would have had somebody come out and get that information. That's good police work. Find out from the witness what they saw. And that never happened. Still hasn't happened. Of course, a little late now. But that concerns me that instead of searching out the facts and coming to get more information, he even said I was 100% bogus. The crime did occur. My wife and I did see it, and we did report it. And no police officer ever came to our house to gather information on what we saw. Absolutely no response to us whatsoever. Now, if that's the way police activity occurs, I think we should take a look at that. I'd also like to know if I can get a copy, transcript of the 911 call that my wife made and what I made, and a copy of the police response to that. I heard that an officer might have gone over there and said that there's nobody in the house. Well, no. The crime was in the garage, in the backyard. The fence was cut. Garage was smashed. Items were stolen. I would hope instead of responding in an attack on me, you would gather the information and have the honorability to discuss it with me and my wife. But that has not happened. So if you make him a continuation as another continuing police chief, take a look closely. Has crime gone down in Barstow? Has crime appropriately been reported? I'm not even sure if this is reported as a crime. Please find out. Thank you.
So noted, sir.
That is all the comments we have.
Okay. Six to eleven. We're going to head into closed session. If I can get a motion as well as a second. Motion? Well, please.
And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, thank you. The mayor and council met in closed session and considered two items. First, an item of public employment regarding the interim city manager, city manager, and police chief there. The council took no reportable action. I will note on tonight's open session agenda is consideration of a contract or two contracts for those positions. That is item number six. And second, the council considered an item of potential litigation on that when the council discussed the litigation risks and potential liabilities from the current animal control and animal services situation. And we'll be bringing forward a proposed animal shelter services contract with Barstow Humane Society and an animal control services plan via city staff for public review and comment and council consideration at the next meeting on December 16th. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to, we'll move right into our regular scheduled 7:00 PM meeting, which was heard at 7:15, will be led in invocation by Joe Vale of Mojave Desert Christian Church and salute the nation's flag by Councilwoman Hernandez. If you all please stand.
Would you bow with me in prayer? Our Father God, we bow before you this evening with thanks on our hearts for any blessings you've given to us. We thank you for this time of year of Thanksgiving, of sharing, of family and friends and the community. We look forward to the time of celebrating the birth of Christ. We look forward to a new year of new beginnings. We ask, Father, that you give the council and the people that work in the city of Barstow wisdom as you gave Solomon wisdom many, many years ago. Help each one, Lord, to look to you for guidance and direction, to operate with honesty, straightforward love and care for the people of this community. We ask you to guide and direct each one, help this community, Lord, to grow in wisdom and understanding. Bless and guide our lives so that things will count for Christ. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you, sir, for the most fitting prayer. Appreciate that. Roll call, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before we begin tonight's meeting, our joint special meeting, I need to state council member Cruz is, will be joining us by Zoom utilizing the reasonable accommodation under the Attorney General Opinion 23-1002. And with that, all members are present.
Thank you. I have a few readings I must, I must do as we get started. Participation is invited. If you wish to be heard on any item on the agenda, including any item on the consent calendar, please look at, by Thelma, your speaker request card and hand it to the city clerk prior to the new item being addressed. If special accommodations are required or were required, the 48 items must have all been given to the city clerk. Code of Ethics. As your elected governing board, we will remember the code of ethics that we voluntarily and honestly approved. During this meeting, we will treat each other and the public with patience, will and courtesy, expecting the same return from the public. The decisions made tonight will be for the benefit of the Barstow community and not for personal gain. Review and approval of the agenda. This is to the governors. This is a time for members of the governing board to call for rearranging the order of the agenda, adding items to or removing items from, or remove items from the consent calendar for discussion on our separate action. Items may only be added to the agenda as allowed by state law, including Government Code Section 54954.2 subdivision B. Allow emergency items to be added by majority vote and align items that arose to the city's attention after the agenda posting deadline, but which require immediate action to be added by a two-thirds vote of the council members present at the meeting, or if less than two-thirds of the council members are present, a unanimous vote of the members present. I will entertain a motion as well. Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item number five.
Item number five.
And approve the, um, I'm sorry.
Okay, it's okay. Just make a note here.
So I move with the, item five being pulled.
And I will second that.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And motion passes on the agenda, pulling item five for further discussion.
Thank you. Which moves immediately to our presentation, agenda number, number three. Presentation to Fernando, AKA Fred Arbaca. And presenter will be myself, as well as CD Clerk Andrew Flores. Yeah?
Good evening, mayor and council, and Mr. Baca, as you make your way to the center. As you make your way to the center. The proclamation for Fernando Fred Baca reads, whereas Fernando Fred Baca, an outstanding resident of the city of Barstow who has served our community and the surrounding areas in an exemplary manner, and whereas Fred Baca has been a member of the Board of Trustees for the Barstow Community College District since 1995, and whereas Fred Baca's devotion to the community has garnered much recognition in which he received the prestigious title of Man of the Year in 1994 and Small Business of the Year in 2006 ordered by the Barstow Area Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Fred Baca served as a member of the Barstow Area Chamber of Commerce and as a founding member and past president of New Hope Village, a former member of the Mojave Valley Volunteer Hospice, the Optimist Club of Barstow and the YMCA of Barstow, and whereas Fred Baca played an instrumental role in the completed projects such as the construction of the Learning Resource Center and the Performing Arts Center for Barstow Community College. And whereas Fred Baca is not just one of personal achievement, he is a beacon for all who aspire to make a difference. And now, therefore, the city council of the city of Barstow hereby recognizes and thanks Fred Baca for his many contributions, dedication and invaluable service to the city of Barstow and our community for the positive impact his services have had on those he served. Signed and sealed at Barstow, California, the second day of December 2024.
Hello. Okay, good. Ms. Baca, I'm gonna let the other council people speak first and then I will speak last. So I'll start here because then we all have something to say.
Now, I just want to say thank you for your dedicated service to the city of Barstow and everything that you have done. You have made a difference in the city of Barstow with the things that you have done and I appreciate it. And I know the citizens of Barstow also appreciate it. Thank you.
So, Mr. Baca, I don't want to cry, but he has a special place for me because I work at Barstow Community College. And Mr. Baca became a board member, I think, in 1997, 1995. And he's been instrumental in not only myself, but my family and generations of many, many families throughout not only Barstow, but throughout the nation because we have these online programs that Mr. Baca and the college and their board have embraced. He has touched thousands upon thousands of lives, opening up opportunities of education for our students everywhere around the world. And his passion and his knowledge as a board member has been, it's invaluable. You cannot put a price on it. You cannot put it into words what Mr. Baca has brought to our community and to everyone. And he also was instrumental in touching the lives of women that are pregnant. And I just can't even, can't even say in words how much I appreciate Mr. Baca and the entire Barstow College, Community College and the board, past and present, of what they've done for us. And everything that you've done, you've done with the backing of your beautiful wife. And I'd like to see if Ms. Baca would like to come up and join us because I would like to see if you have something to say. I'd also like to invite Dr. Eva Bag from Barstow Community College and the president of the board, Mr. Wilkie, to come up because I'd like for you to all participate in saying a little something about this amazing man. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Baca, for everything that you've done. You and your brother, Dr. Ted Baca, he was instrumental as well. The Baca brothers, their legacy will move on and they will continue to touch lives of thousands of people because of the education that we do provide at Barstow Community College. Again, thank you. My hats are off to you and I salute you.
Well, I met Mr. Baca at H and E. So we go back, back, way back. And then, on top of that, I got the honor of serving on the board with you and your brother. And it was such an honor. We also happen to belong to the same church community. And there isn't a time when you couldn't ask Fred for whatever it was and that he would not offer a helping hand. You are so representative of Barstow being a family, a community, that where you can have our differences, but when it comes to need, we all come together. So it's like a family, right? You're fighting with the brother, but then they may fight with him, but you pick on somebody, we're gonna get you. And that's how we are here in Barstow. We take care of each other. And I appreciate all that you have done. There hasn't been a time when I haven't considered you a friend and a community activist as much as my husband and I are. And I know that you will continue to be of service because that's who you are. So thank you for everything.
I'd just like to share my appreciation for trustee Baca. I first met Fred when I joined Barstow College as an instructor in 2001. And from the very beginning, I, as many other faculty, just naturally gravitated to Fred for his kind demeanor, his professionalism, his support, his listening abilities and just really creating a positive environment. And then coming to the college as superintendent, president, Fred has been a source of inspiration, unwavering support and the most entrepreneurial ideas, always, always thinking of new ways to promote and add and invigorate the college in service of this wonderful community. Fred, we look forward to you coming to the college for fun things and events and not always having to work, but thank you so much for all of your wonderful service.
Thank you. Fred, I want to just take the opportunity to thank you again for your dedication of nearly three decades to Barstow Community College and your, your friendship that was mentioned before and your demeanor, but also your leadership abilities. And I, I consider you a mentor in how you have spoken to me on the quiet side. Put your arm around me, whispered in my ear, gave me advice, gave me leadership wisdom. I want to appreciate, thank you and express my appreciation for you and the way you held yourself in all of the meetings and in every aspect of life, our community, Barstow community. If we have more leaders like this coming up, we will be a great place. But you've led that by example. And I want to express on behalf of the college board, we are truly gonna miss you, sir, and your leadership. Thank you.
We're gonna give, are we gonna give Sandy the last word?
This is a man I'm very, very proud of. Every month when he would come home from a meeting, "How was your meeting?" It's either, it was great, a little tough, but it ended up well. I'm very, very proud of him. And I know some of the college people had asked me and thanked me for his wisdom and I just, my comment is this. Fred probably spends ninety-five percent of his home life on a computer. He's either looking into everything that's happening in Washington, D.C., Sacramento, city council. So he knows whenever he sees something that might benefit our college, he presented it to Dr. But here I am. Anyway, he's a great man, but never, ever did he reveal anything that he shouldn't do or shouldn't say. And I have to say, most times I found out what was happening at the college from the community. And that's the truth. He was, he's very loyal of that way. He, he knew that his job was, he had one person to be responsible for and that's Dr. Bag. And he did not run out and talk to all the professors and all the students and come back with all kinds of advice or criticism or whatever it might be. He never, ever did that. That is something that a board of trustee just doesn't do. So I am proud of him and I'm proud of everybody who had wonderful things to say about him here and in this community and at the college. And you are one wonderful man.
Okay. Mr. Baca, oh my God. You've heard it. In, in the language I speak, I call it the invent some. You're definitely the invent some person. And you've touched this community in many, 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 many ways. Very positive. Mrs. Baca, Sandy. Oh my God. Dating back April the sixth, nineteen eighty-six, I started my first business in Barstow, April fourth, eighty-six. And I've heard of you before. You guys are my very first customers, including upholstery. And let me tell you, your upholstery was white. So it was, it was a challenge. It was a learning lesson, but it totally changed my way of delivering customer service to the community. And all these years later, I remember that. You two believed in me and gave me a chance, along with hundreds of employees since then that have made us where we are today. So I thank you for that. That's not a personal note. And Sandy, your art, your artist work, that, that piece I purchased from you, which you actually gave to me, still hangs in my home to this moment. If you look online right now, you'll see that picture posted in my house, on my desk. So yes, you and your wonderful husband have been quite an inspiration to this entire community. So when this came, I'm like, oh my goodness. I am honored to present this. So keep doing what you're doing. Okay?
Of all the community members who work so hard to make Barstow a better place, they all deserve this. What can I say? I, I didn't do this for glory. I was raised to say, to do whatever you had to do to improve your home life, your community. If you want it to be better, you put work into it and you don't do it for glory or you don't even think about what you're doing. You just do it. It has to be done. And so we just do it, you know? And so to all of you who have honored me, thank you so much. And this goes to all the people of Barstow. Thank you.
Moving right along. Presentation from San Manuel. Our presenter, our representative is Axie San Manuel, representative. I'm sure he will acknowledge himself. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Is the audio good?
Yes. Audio is good.
Yeah, thank you. And my name's Alberto Haslo and I'm representative with the Samenew Abandamish and Indians. I have the pleasure of serving there, Director of Strategic Philanthropy. And I want to start off by saying thank you to the Mayor and City Council for having us, but also it's great to see many of our partners here in the audience, you know, here today to be a part of this meeting. Today, we have a brief presentation on the tribe's Samenew Cares Program, which is our philanthropy program. Before I get started, I wanted to extend our sincere appreciation on behalf of the Samenew Tribal Council for you all, for the visit that you guys recently had at the Samenew Reservation. It was truly an honor for us to be able to showcase a little bit more about our tribal government and share more about our culture and our tribal values. And I think in this presentation, we're gonna, you know, during the meeting with our council, we talked about coming to the, one of our, one of your council meetings to talk more about our philanthropy program. And today, that's what we're here to do. So I thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity. So with our Samenew Cares Program. Cool. So the Samenew Abandamish and Indians is a federally recognized Indian tribe that's located near Highland in San Bernardino County. Our Aboriginal ancestral lands are over seven point four million acres. And as you all know, when some of the bad history that has happened with Native American communities were confined to about eleven hundred acres of reservation trust land. But when you think about the tribe's original ancestral lands, if you look at this map, it includes the communities of Twenty-Nine Palms all the way up to Barstow, to Lancaster and Northern Riverside County. Again, seven point four million acres and now we're confined to eleven hundred acres. But one of the things that continues to motivate us is our cultural values and our tribal principles is that although we, we, you know, we no longer inhabit these Sereno ancestral lands, it's still our stewardship responsibility to take care of all those who reside on our Sereno ancestral lands. This includes the animals, the people and all of its inhabitants. And, and that's why with our philanthropy program, we follow our call of Yawa, which is to act on one's belief, which is, Yawa is a Sereno term, which means that pay it forward and to act on your beliefs of continuing to help. And I think Mr. Baca is a good example of our call of Yawa, just to kind of put it into perspective. One of our tribal values at Samenew is principled philanthropy. And we truly believe that in order for our communities to be better, we need to make sure that we continue to provide, to bring people together in unity, but also to provide investments to make our communities better. Since the early two thousands, the tribe has awarded over four hundred and million dollars in charitable giving investments throughout the community. And this includes over five thousand organizations, right? This includes nonprofit organizations, other tribal governments, community hospitals, you name it. And the reason why is because we want to make sure that we have strong communities. And with our charitable giving program, we focus on four core principles. And the first one being education. We want to make sure that our young children, that the future generations that are coming before our youth are making sure that they have access to education, whether it's through the K through twelve system, our community colleges, Barstow Community College, or any four-year institution that they decide to go. We also support, we understand that there's a lot of challenges with housing and some of our folks that are unsheltered or find themselves in difficult times. And this is why with our Empowering Lives pillar, this is where we focus on supporting a lot of those groups. And, you know, it's something that we need to make sure that our folks have basic needs and they're, they're taken care of, right? And then the following pillars are reinforcing healthy and resilient communities. We cannot have educated community if our folks are not healthy. And this is why we've, with this pillar, this is where we focus on a lot of mental health care programs, providing direct healthcare needs and so forth. We understand that here in the city of Barstow, we're limited with some of our healthcare facilities that we do have. But that's why it's important for us to make sure that we have a healthy community. And our preserving culture traditions and empowering the Indian country, you know, one of the things that we understand is that there's still a lot of other tribes that are still struggling to, you know, to, to bring. are still struggling to, you know, to bring infrastructure into their reservations, but also to revitalize their culture and some of their language programs. And through our philanthropy program, one of the core areas that we want to make sure is that we continue to take care of other sister tribes, whether it's in California or throughout Indian country. When we think about partnerships, as I shared earlier, one of our values is unity. We understand that if we really want to make a difference, we need to all come together as a community. So with our philanthropy program, when we think about some of the different grant requests that we get, we accept proposals that come in from other tribal governments that are federally recognized tribes. From California to New York, we've had partnerships with other tribal governments. And again, because we understand that there's still a lot of tribes that are still struggling to support their tribal citizens, and we want to do the very best that we can to support them. Our 501(c)(3) nonprofits, I know we have some of our partners here in the room. And again, these are some of the folks that are creating those safety programs or those public service programs that are really supporting our community. And again, going back to the local colleges and the community, the school districts and so forth, we want to make sure that we're investing in those institutions because they're the first touch, they're the first, they're the community resource. And lastly, city and county governments, we want to make sure that we continue to support our county government partners, our city government partners, and any governmental agencies, because we understand that sometimes we need that extra help in order to bring programs up to fruition. Our annual grant cycle opens up, and this is where the tribe accepts proposals for qualified 501(c)(3) tribal governments, educational institutions. And this is opening it up on February 1st. And one of the call to actions for us today is just to really encourage some of our partners to check out our Samenewal Cares Program, because between February 1st and March 31st, this is where the tribe accepts qualified grant proposals for organizations to submit grant requests that fall within our giving pillars. We want to make sure that we're working with the community. We do have our guidelines that'll kind of walk you through all. But normally, February 1st to March 31st, this is where we accept the applications. And it takes us about two to three months to review them and make decisions on a lot of these requests. And some of the program guidelines that we look for, we take a very disciplined approach with our philanthropy. When we think about some of the organizations that are working, we want to make sure that we're creating a difference in the community. And that's why some of these eligibility requirements is that we want to make sure that you complete your full application. We want to make sure that you can show that you've been around for some time, that you're in good standing with the IRS. We also want to make sure that you demonstrate capacity to take care of the programs. We also want to make sure that you have the financial health to make sure that you operate these programs at the scale that they should, because I think at the end of the day, it's about those folks that we're helping. And this is why we have this process that we want to make sure that we're working with qualified organizations that are doing good in the community. So these are some of the highlights that we wanted to share. And in this photo, you know, I know I've shared some of the information that we had, but I really kind of wanted to provide this, these four quick photos, just to kind of bring some perspective of what we've done. You know, in the city of San Bernardino, one of the opportunities that we were able to create between Samenewal, the Los Angeles Dodgers Foundation, and the city of San Bernardino is that we were able to bring the first Dodgers Dream Field to the community. San Bernardino, as you all know, is a community that's been historically underserved and underfunded, and we were able to build that full-on park. And now our children in our community have a Dodgers Dream Field, which is an inspiration. And actually, that day, the third baseman coach, who's from Barstow, was there to do the grand opening. And again, this was a grant that the tribe provided for 1.2 million. Recently, we also partnered with the local Highland Senior Center, which is, they're our neighbors. And again, we provided a half a million dollar investment to make sure that we did renovations to a building that's over 100 years old. And again, this is a place of recreation, a place where a lot of our seniors come to get for services. And the tribe approved the grant to do much-needed reservation, renovations. And the last one that I wanted to highlight is we recently partnered with the local Barstow Optimist Group, in which we did a community sponsorship, and we were able to help out over 1,600 students from your school district at the Barstow High School. And it was pretty cool to see some of the families and some of the childrens to give out some of those backpacks and so forth, getting them ready for the school year. And then lastly, we also work with County of San Bernardino with our fire folks to help offset some of the cost for a bulldozer, right? One of the things that our communities are often faced as wildfires, and we were able to bridge an opportunity to help pay for the cost for the bulldozer. And I know it's like a big capital expense and so forth, but when you really think about the impacts that a bulldozer has during a wildfire, as it navigating through vegetation and some of those things, we were able to contribute with that program as well. So that concludes the presentation that I have. Samenewalcares.org is where you'll find a lot more information on our grant application. The charitable giving at Samenewal is our email if there's any questions. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions that the mayor or city council may have this time. Thank you.
Well, seeing nobody on my screen, I'll say this. First, on behalf of myself and the councilpeople who could attend that special day down at your casino, it was a wow. We were embraced with hello early in the morning, and we were sent off in the early evening with a full belly and full of gratitude. Thank you all for that day. We learned a lot. And your giving back to the communities, you just said $400 million in charitable giving. Wow. Wow.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, what a blessing for all of us. I'm gonna say that. On my screen right now, I have a couple councilpeople that'd like to make comment also. Start with Carmen Hernandez and then Councilwoman Rose. Then Mayor Portion Noble.
I want to thank you for keeping your word. You said you would come, and you did. And I truly appreciate that. And we'll ensure that that information is provided on our Channel 6 and on our website. And that's what I find a lot of times, our community, 501(c)(3) don't know what is available, or sometimes some of us keep secrets. And I think everybody needs to know their applications. But truly, I want to thank you, because I remember when you were on that reservation and the conditions of those homes. And I see it as such a blessing as to what I saw when I went down there. And I love the idea that in spite of how you were treated, you care about all of us. That's important. And we don't always see that in the division in our country. So thank you so much for keeping your word, for coming to our community. And I wish you blessings for Christmas and that you continue the great job that you're doing and that you continue to retain your culture and spread it to others, because it is so important in this world for us to find peace of mind and peace of heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rose.
Thank you. So, you know, we all hear of that saying called "angels amongst us," and I believe that Samenewal Tribe are angels amongst us. You have, you and the tribe council have made a difference in people's lives, and you continue to do so. You know, you've touched the lives of our community, and you're partnering with our community. And I just want to say thank you for, you know, to all of you for your contributions and for caring enough to help others. It just makes a better world for all of us, correct? I do look forward to, though, I'm not sure if you have received an invitation, but I do chair the Homeward Bound Committee, and we have multiple nonprofits that come. And I would love to see you or a representative at that Homeward Bound Committee, if you've not already received the invitation, to come and speak to our nonprofits, and so that they are also aware of the application timelines and what would be expected of them. And so Marybel, if you haven't already given out that invitation, can you make sure that they get the invitation? It's December 11th, and it would be at 5:00 PM here in the city council.
Yeah, and I think those are the opportunities we're looking for, again, to create more awareness, to target more partners, and so we would be more than interested in that.
Wonderful, thank you. And again, I just want to thank you for everything that you and your organization have done for all of us. You do make a difference.
Mayor Portion.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to just echo what my counterparts said. Thank you for the presentation. I thank you for what you're doing for not just our community, but the surrounding communities as a whole and stuff. And I know you put up your website email, but can you give me that again?
Yeah, most definitely. It's www.samenewalcares.org.
Dot org, got it.
Yeah, and I know we shared the presentation with the city clerk. You know, feel free to distribute it to your partners, or if we can help with anything, we're more than happy to answer any more questions.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Yeah, thank you so much, everyone.
Mayor, we do have public comment on this as well. Ms. Marshall Wiesma.
Thank you, Alberto.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for coming up.
Welcome, Ms. Wiesma.
Thank you. It was a very nice presentation, short, brief. It answered all the questions, and I thank you for answering them, and I will look forward to having you come back. It is a great reservation, a great casino down there, and we've celebrated many anniversaries, birthdays, and special occasions, and we do love your lobster buffet when you have it. Thank you so much.
That is all the comment we have on this.
All right, moving along with the agenda. Let's see, consent, common public comment, okay. I'm just going through some things here. Consent, common public comment. This is the time and place for the general public to address the governing board on all matters on the consent calendar. Speaker asks to eliminate your comments on all consent items to three minutes or less. Our request to speak must be received prior to the general item being addressed. If special limitations are required or were required, a 48-hour notice must already have been given. Ms. City Clerk?
Item five was the item polled, but I'll go ahead and read the ratification and then discussion. So item five is the ratification of accounts payable expenditures. The recommended action is to approve and ratify expenses as audited for checks 97439 through 97648 totaling $3,122,833.17, and wires 1045 through 1056 totaling $283,874.04 per the agency breakdown. City, $3,294,316.05. Fire, $112,391.16 for a grand total of $3,406,707.21.
Thank you. Now, if you recall, this item was polled by Councilwoman Rose, so we'll go right into discussion on this. Councilwoman Rose?
I believe we go into questions and then discussion, so I have some questions.
Sure.
I'm questioning, this would be on page six of 14. If you look at the lower right side, it says "Package," page 15. And I'm looking at check number 97479. And this is for the vendor Gina Whiteside, and it would be for the October 2024 Animal Services Consultant. My question is, I do remember that we were told that there's an agreement that it would not, this consultant would not exceed $48,000 for the whole services. My question is, how many more payments of $10,000 will she be earning? And how many hours per week is she working?
I believe it's one, one more?
There will be, so this is October's payment. There will be November, and the contract expires December, so there should be two more payments.
I think the mid of December it expires. And she works 40 hours a week.
You know, I don't recall...
My question, my question would also be that for 40 hours a week, did, are we, did we offer health and welfare as a consultant? Or is she a consultant? What is her provisions under?
So she's a professional, she has a professional service agreement as an outside consultant, so it's just strictly payment. There is no benefit.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I have, the next question I have would be on, it's page six of 10, and under, it would be under "Package," page 29. Check number 97610. Oh, excuse me, one under, 97611. Okay, perfect. So I see that there is an H-Pro Events LLC, and this is for the 2024 Christmas Tree Lighting Event, for $7,690. Can you please let us know what they are providing? I know that we have a big tree that popped up outside. But what are we paying for? What are the services for?
So I believe that this invoice was a job that was requested by the city clerk's office. So I'm not 100% fully aware of the itemized receipt, but I don't know, Marybel, if you're prepared to...
The information was actually gathered by the Park and Rec Department, but that is to pay for the stage that's going to be out there and lighting generator for the event that's for this Friday, because, you know, we're closing the street down, and they're going to be setting up quite a large stage for the performers that are going to be here that evening.
Thank you. Are we aware that we could probably rent a stage for a lot cheaper than $7,000? I mean, we can borrow a stage from others within our community.
The stage is not the only thing on there. It's all-inclusive, so it's, it's a, it's the microphone and the sound system, and so it's a bunch of things. If you'd like an itemized list, we can provide that to the council.
I would, because this is a lot of money to be spending, and, I mean, I know that we have the capability of providing sound system, so without seeing the itemized list...
Not the sound system that would cover the entire block. And we are allocated this budget in the fiscal budget that the council approved for this event in July.
I understand that, but I'm just trying to eliminate what we, in past, what we've done, where we've spent a tremendous amount of money on something, and we don't know what we're paying for as a council. We're asked, being asked to approve this amount, and I'd like to know what we're paying for, simple as that.
Yeah, we could provide the list for the council.
I also have another question, and it's in correlation to this check, to this event. I was looking at last month's, or our last meeting agenda, and I didn't catch it then, but I caught it this weekend when I was reviewing some things in regards to this event. The TUP, which is also known, or Temporary Use Permit Application, also known as TUP. I didn't notice till this weekend, when I was reviewing this as a whole, that the TUP says the present use of property is the Harvey House parking lot for the event of the tree lighting. Was this caught, and has it been, why was it accepted, and has it been... lighting. Was this caught, and has it been, why was it accepted, and has it been revised?
It's been revised, and it was caught last, last meeting. No council members brought it up for discussion, so we just made the change ourselves. Yep.
It was caught by the, and it was corrected after council meeting?
No.
Because I don't, normally, they usually hold the tree lighting at the Harvey House, and I think originally, when the planning process started for that event, that's where it was going to be held, and that's how the paperwork was submitted. So now that it's been changed to out here in front of City Hall, that document had to be revised.
Okay, so it has been revised since, and thank you for that. And I just want to know what the difference was from having it at the Harvey House to here in front of City Hall. What is the cost savings to do it in front of City Hall, if there is any? I'm unaware of the cost. Unaware of the cost savings?
Yeah, I'm unaware of any specific cost savings. The idea was to provide a little bigger space for everyone, and to have City Hall lit up where afterwards our citizens could drive by and see the lights and see City Hall. You know, I wanted to hear in the community that, hey, let's drive by City Hall, and let's see the lights. You don't get that at the Harvey House. You get a room, and then that's it, in a small tree. So we used our budget, we stretched our budget to its max, and we were intending to provide a really exciting night for our citizens on Friday night with the tree lighting. You've seen the tree. It's a 20-footer, and I authorized the purchase of that tree, which is the biggest tree that Barstow's ever had. So we plan to have something very special for our citizens, something they can remember this year.
I think it would be very special. How much should the tree cost?
I don't have that in front of me, ma'am.
Do you know? Do you know what the cost of the tree was?
No, no.
I actually do.
Not specifically, no.
So when we started looking for the tree, we reached out to a few vendors. We also looked at the option of renting the tree to see if it was going to be more cost-effective, but it actually, it was better for us to purchase a tree, which was $20,000, and renting a tree that we would just have for the two weeks was going to cost us $19,000.
Wow, 20,000. And who's, and what budget is this being paid out of?
That comes out of the Measure Q.
Excuse me, audience, please.
Okay.
Again, it was presented in the fiscal year budget and approved by the council for this spending.
For the, for the actual tree lighting?
For this money to be spent on this event. That's what we're doing with it.
Right, well.
It makes no sense to rent a tree for 20,000 or 19,000, when the city of Barstow can purchase one at one-time purchase for 20,000, and then be able to use that for years to come, you know? Our Public Works has built a nice stand for it, and the goal was that, you know, in the future, the citizens can have a nice tree. We only play one time for it, and we could get, you know, 10, 20 years out of it.
I think the tree would be beautiful, but it also doesn't make sense to me to pay $20,000 out of Measure Q money for a tree, when we could buy a tree from Walmart for $199, and we could have that showcased every year. It's just for me, fiscal responsibility and accountability on how we're spending the money, especially coming out of Measure Q, our taxpayers' funds, doesn't make sense to me why we're spending so much, and why we are spending $20,000 on a tree. That does not make sense to me. Thank you.
Let me make a couple of comments on this, and the expenditures, et cetera. When the CM came forth with this great idea, this was months ago, being an engaged council member, AKA your elected mayor, we, I look at everything. I read everything. The first question is, what's budgeted? If it's approved, how it got budgeted, and how we're going to move for it. CM provided all the information, which totally made sense. Okay, totally makes sense. I want the public to know that all the council has the ability to discuss any of these items that are on the agenda or non-agenda with our CM or the appropriate staff well in advance. These meetings are not designed in any way to have a "I gotcha" moments, because we discuss all things in advance. So all questions can be answered with the appropriate department heads or our CD managers prior to these meetings, so the general public does not have to sit here and watch "aha, I gotcha" moments. That creates a disconnect with staff. It creates a disconnect with this governing board, and it creates a disconnect with our community, as if we, as the governors, are doing something that we should not be doing. You've heard the CD managers say on various occasions, just tonight, that this particular agenda item has been approved. It went through the whole process. We, as the governing board, approved this expenditure. No question about it. Okay? Prior to this expenditure, you heard another discussion about a $48,000 cap that we were spending on a consultant. According to my notes, that was never disclosed to this council that there was a $48,000 cap on spending a consultant. We are all aware that our CD manager has authority to spend up to $75,000 on taking care of business. So when this particular 40,000 or whatever showed up, okay, it's well within his authority and his spending limits. He's just taking care of business. And I want the public to really understand that. And I do not want them to think at any moment that our staff does things without approval or behind their back, because they don't. Everything goes through the process. You know, I'm the first one to admit, we get a lot of information, books and books and books and books and books, and stacks of information. And if we're not willing to spend, you know, the 20, or 30, or 48 hours a week, like we heard Mr. Baca speak of it earlier, sir will comment on how thorough he is in making his decisions. Sitting in the governing position, our decision-making decision, we must take the time to do our homework. If not, we show up here, and we ask all our homework questions in a public setting, and it puts our staff on the spot as if they're not doing their job, and that is not the truth. I want the public to understand that. Totally understand that. Okay? And so I'm saying to my CD manager, thank you, Andrew Espinoza, for doing your job. Okay? Maribel, thank you for doing your job. Fincher, thank you for doing your job. And being able to take all this in as a "I gotcha" moment and explain the best you can in this type of setting. You can trust all the information that's been asked for by Councilwoman Rose or any one of us. You know, if we don't have the information tonight, it will be provided tomorrow. And anyone from the general public can reach out to our CD manager or the department heads and get the answers that appear, that appears as though we can't answer tonight. We can answer the questions, but we just can't answer them right now, because we're not prepared for these questions, because these type of questions should have been asked prior to the public. So it comes off, and it's the truth, that we really know what we are doing, and we do know what we are doing, and we do have the answers. And our, and our, okay, this is a comment to this gentleman in front of me. I don't recall his name, but sir, if you cannot save your inappropriate comments, I'm going to ask the officers to take you out front and explain to you conduct, actions, and appropriate behavior in this type of setting. So this is your warning. Now, I'm getting back to explaining how it really works. We get all the information. We always get all the information. We do our homework. Those of us that do it, we go to our CD manager. We ask all the questions. We get the answers. That's what we do. And we do not use this as a "I gotcha" moment, because that is not the way we do things. Would you agree, Mr. Baca? Thank you, sir, for the acknowledgement.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to continue.
Please do.
Thank you. So there's a minimum of 14 pages of expenditures, and I have two questions. The questions aren't anything but for my knowledge, and however the mayor wants to spend it, it's for accountability and transparency, because when we're spending this kind of money, our constituents, our taxpayers, have a right to know where our money is being spent. We voted in Measure Q for certain things, and they have a right to know what $7,690 is being, is paying for. So it's accountability as a council person. I, I do do my homework, and if I have questions, and if I call earlier today, and I have a full-time job, so I have to separate the two. And today's the only day that we can ask questions, because City Hall's closed on Friday. We pick up our agenda late Thursday. So if I were to call today, may or may not have been able to get into City Hall somebody to answer the phone, because everybody's busy on a Monday after a holiday. However, if I would have asked the question earlier today, there is no transparency. There is no fiscal accountability on why we're spending this kind of money. I chose to ask the question here so that we can be transparent to our taxpayers, to our constituents, because we're here because of our constituents. Measure Q is in place because of the taxpayers, so I chose to ask the question here. And I have a right. We all have a right to ask any question we want. Again, there's more than 14 pages, and there's at least 15 to 20 on each page, and I had two questions. I have a right to ask. In fact, I've been voted in again, because I ask these questions, because I want transparency for our constituents. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, seeing no one else on the screen?
Mayor, we do have comment.
You may have a comment, yeah.
Our first speaker is Ms. Marshall Weesma.
Welcome back, Marshall Weesma.
Thank you. I too, Barbara, did look through the, and go through it with a fine-toothed comb, as you say. I was really shocked that it happened. I attend every council meeting. I did not hear or did not see where the change was made from the Harvey House to the front area, but we do have a city manager and staff that spend a lot of money, and unfortunately, the council did grant them that hefty time to spend the money, and they do do it. I do appreciate you looking through it, going through it, being honest and transparent with the viewers out in TV land. And I sure hope that Channel 6 is on and airing and not off, because we're hearing, A, it's off. It does go off quite frequently, and we see a blue or a green screen, or we see a flashing thing, and it'll, someone will be talking, say when Mr. Courtney was talking, and it just cuts him off, and la, 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 we hear music. That's not what we're paying for. So transparency is a big thing, and that's what kept Barbara in the office. And I hope that the rest of you are transparent also. I know we have two or three that I'm really familiar with, and they're honest and transparent. So it takes a team, and it takes a lot of effort for every one of you to sit up there and smile. And there's all kinds of things that you do go through, and the public is not aware of them. But honesty and transparency is what we are all looking for. Thank you again, Ms. Rose. Thank you, Carmen. Thank you, Courtney. And thank you, Mr. Noble, for what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. So noted. I see the CD manager. You have it on the screen?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I just want you to know that we're not, we're not being, we're not making hasty decisions with the budget. We, you know, you get what you pay for. We get a budget every year. We come to you, and we ask you, this is what we spend the money on. As Measure Q, we spent $60,000 on fireworks. We don't go to the pyrotechnic person and say, we have a $60,000 budget, but give us a 20, a $15,000 show or something. We give a show that we think that our citizens deserve to see, and that is within our budget, and we have 60. There is cities that spend far more than that. Our budget's 60. When it came to Christmas celebration, we want to give our citizens a good Christmas celebration. If they don't get it here, they're going to drive like I used to do, John Torancio, and see big celebrations down there. So we used the budget that we had. We saw a tree that came lighted, that it presented an opportunity for our citizens to be, to look at it and be proud of. And it wasn't a one-time or two-week rental. It was something that we can, we can put in our, in our public works area and save and use every year. So we get reoccurring use out of it for 10, 20 years. So we didn't see it as not being frugal with the taxpayers' money. We did budget these things. These things are budgeted. I thought, I never thought anything like this would come up. I did meet with other council members, as I do when this comes out, and council members regularly meet with me and speak to me about these things. And the one thing that had come up was the whitewater rock supply. Now, a council member said, White River Boulders, why did we spend, what's $4,000 for the White River Boulders? I mean, that makes sense, right? Would you see a lot of White River Boulders out in Barstow? You know, no, they're in storage right now, because we bought them at a good price, and now we're going to go, and we're going to try to fix up some of the medians and some of the things in our town, hold those weeds down, and we're going to put boulders up in different places. Seems like a good idea. Let's buy it now, while we can get it cheap, and then we can put them out in the next quarter. So that's what I thought we would field questions on, not celebrations, that we're just trying to do something good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I'd like to know, on the audit report for the Marriott for the last quarter, there was no total put out, but there was a total to compensate them for the contract, which was $180,000. But I couldn't get Sydney to tell me how much money came in in the last quarter. It was being audited. That would have been July, August, and September. And they were just ordering it, auditing it. But you couldn't tell me how much was in there. I called her earlier. I spoke to her when she came in. I still don't know how much money was. I just want to know where the $181,000 came from. To make them solvent, did we collect it in that quarter? Or did we not? But yet, you're writing them a check for that, to make them hold $480,000 that you guaranteed them a year. So why isn't it in the report? How much was collected? How, you have a total amount of what you paid them. And then I pursued it a little further. Last time it came up, we had paid them $298,000, and $57,000 is what the city got. Well, now I found out that the city only netted $9,000.
This is a point of order.
Why?
Mr. Mayor, this is a point of, I'm calling a point of order.
Okay. Mr. Hernandez, that concern of that question should be, and I recommend you bring it to the general reception, CM, outside of this meeting, and I'm sure that he will get with you and-
I took it to the finance director, because that's her department.
However, I'm saying to you, Mr. Hernandez, our CD manager is our CD manager, and the finance director reports to our CD manager. So I would encourage not only you, but anyone from the public, if you focus on the leadership person that's in charge, he or she will definitely direct you or answer your questions. I would encourage you to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I-
I understand that, yeah.
Can I say something for, I'm still on my time.
Yeah, and I'm on my time, sir. Okay, yeah, this is a point of order situation, okay? We are addressing the item that was pulled for discussion. This is ratification of accounts payable expenditure. I do understand- I do understand your concern, and I hear your concern. I hear your concern. Okay? And so I'm just saying to you, sir, please direct your concern to our city manager, and he will address any concerns with his staff. That's all that I'm saying, sir.
If I understand it right, if I could jump in, this is-
Yes, go ahead, sir.
The point of order is to ask, is the commenter speaking on item five on the agenda? As I understand it, he may well be, because the item five included a check to the Barstow Hospitality Group, and he's asking about the value of that check. Is the value of that check the right value or not? There's other comments that relate to it, but as I see it, subject to the council's decision, it is consistent with item five.
Okay.
He's asking about a check on the agenda, and was that the right amount or not?
Okay. Thank you for that-
About a minute left.
Thank you for that clarification.
Do I get my time back?
Go ahead, sir. I will give you your time back.
I was just curious, because there was no follow-up through staff to find that out. It's a contract that was approved, and this is part of the contract. And I thought, as a taxpayer, I have a right to know what happened, and why did they get that money, and where did it come from? And I can't get an explanation, and that's all I want is explanation.
And I, and I do agree with you on that, sir, just as I am a taxpayer like you are, and I want transparency also. Please direct it to our, our C M, and moving forward, I'm, I'm confident that he will get with the finance director and get you the information that you're asking for.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir. Yes.
I just want to make a clarification that when anybody comes up to speak about this, that, that we ask the speaker to identify what check number they're speaking of. That way, we'll, we can go to it and identify it, because we did not know what Mr. Hernandez was speaking of. So thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for the additional clarification. And thank you, officers, for addressing any issues with the public disturbing the peace of the process of this meeting.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Williams.
Welcome back, Honorable Mr. Williams.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. You may not think I'm going to be so honorable in a minute here. Um, where do I begin? The Marriott deal, once again, a joke. The amount of money we're, we're just throwing out the window is crazy. By the way, city did such a great job of making sure that we got the good deal on this Christmas tree. Amazon has your 20-foot tree for $11,906. Just let you know that one. I can't believe it. I don't, you know, I got a, I got a luncheon, an award luncheon. $4,000 for awards. Yeah, I, I get it. We want, we want to make sure our staff is well-liked. I mean, I'm sure they're, they're happy every time they go and cash their check from us. I mean, good, but $4,000 now, $5,000 on the, on the last one, it's $9,000 in dinners. Think about what the heck we're doing. It's not about what we, what you guys think. It's about what the public thinks. It, it has nothing to do. And if, and if that's the case, how come I didn't find the $20,000 tree on your budget?
Okay, Ms., are you referring to any specific item or check number? If you are, could you please refer to it?
Okay. Check number 97621.
Okay.
All right.
Page number, please?
Come on.
No, I'm serious.
Yeah, I'm serious, too. That's what you're getting. So that's $4,000.
Page number, please? See, all, all we're doing is being very specific. That's, that's being requested.
Ms. Courtney, you're interrupting my time.
Excuse me.
Told you before not to do that. You did it.
You're interrupting my time.
No.
Okay, officers, I hope you're paying attention. Here you go. See, this is meeting, I'm the chair of this meeting. You're not, okay? You get three minutes to come up and speak. We're asking you to be very specific and very direct. That's all. Now, in a, in a month or so, sir-
How about this? How about this for direct?
You, you will be sitting up here-
Your butt's on the way out, and we're all happy you're gone. That's, how didn't you like that one? See, this is the kind of stuff we do.
Here you go.
You're interrupting my time.
Mr.-
Yeah, may I ask for a point of order, please? Can we take a five-minute break? I would like-
Hold on. Okay, okay. Here you go. Officers?
I would like-
Excuse me, excuse me. Mr. Williams is disturbing the conduct of this meeting. Okay, Councilwoman Rose asked a moment ago for the guests, when they come up and speak, specific check numbers, page numbers.
The call she asked was check-
No, no, hold on. Okay, okay.
She didn't ask for item page.
I'm correcting you. See, when you sit up here, you hear a lot that you don't hear out there.
Mr. Mayor, can we please take a five-minute break?
Yes, we will. But what I'm saying is, I want to make sure Mr. Williams understands something. You'll be sitting up here in about a month. You have no idea what you don't know, sir.
This is a-
And I know you will do, excuse me.
I know $11,000 for a 20-foot tree on Amazon.
Okay, here you go.
Counsel, I'm asking for a point of order, please.
Excuse me.
There's been a request made for a point of order.
Mayor is out of order as well.
Mr. Williams, what I'm saying is, any one of us can go online and find something cheaper.
Matthew?
This is another smack in the face of our staff.
Mayor, a request has been made for a point of order.
In five minutes.
Okay? Our staff. Okay, I'm not going to sit here and listen to people come up here and beat up our staff as if they're not doing their job. They are doing their job.
$9,000?
Counsel, I'd just like to take a break for five minutes.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take a break.
Ms. Clerk, could you please?
I have a point of order because the CM just threatened me.
Wait, excuse me.
That I'm trying to break it down.
Excuse me. Mr. Williams, you have, you have, um, Madam Clerk, could you give Mr. Williams a minute?
He had 104 left in my notes. He had 104 left on my note.
He has 104 left.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
You know what's funny? We've never asked for a page number before. We just gave the check number. I, I get it. I understand what you're talking about, the check number. And, and I agree with that. But we never asked for the page number. Let's get back on the Christmas tree. Hey, since I got you mad, let's go and get you really pissed off. Um.
Okay, Mr. Clown? Officers? Please. Excuse, excuse me. You, you, you're here giggling at the process. It's disturbing the peace of the meeting. Are you finished, Mr. Williams?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you, sir.
We have no more comment on this item.
Are you entertaining a motion as well as a second to move this, this item forward? This is item number five, ratifications of accounts payable expenditures.
So move.
Second.
Hold, please. My screen doesn't have the, uh.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
So motion passes four with one no vote on Councilmember Rose.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number six. Our presenter is our city attorney, Matthew Summers. It's approval of a second amendment to employment agreement for Andrew Espinoza Jr. as interim city manager, public safety director, and police chief, and approval of successor employment agreement for Andrew Espinoza Jr. as police chief, and also as a recommended action. Mr. City Attorney, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council and community, what's before you are two proposed contracts. The first is a time extension with no changes to the financial aspects for the interim city manager and public safety director and police chief's continued service as interim city manager, public safety director, and police chief. This would be from the current contract expiration date of February 5th, 2025, to be extended through April 1st, 2025. There would be a continuing salary of $273,493.8 as base salary plus a 3% educational incentive because Mr. Espinoza has a master's degree and a 2.5% certification incentive because Mr. Espinoza has a post-executive management certificate with associated benefits and a safety pension. The intention of this second amendment is to provide time for the council's ongoing recruitment of a permanent city manager. The posting for applicants for the permanent city manager is out and was out last month. It closes at late December. And in order to ensure time for the council, including some new council members, to consider the applications, go through an interview process, and make a selection, the current council has directed this to come forward to be a contract time extension through April 1st of 2025, creating space and time for the recruitment to go through while ensuring continued service for a, the interim city manager as interim city manager. The second contract is a successor employment contract to take effect on the earlier of the appointment of a permanent city manager or April 1st for Mr. Espinoza to then return to his service as just police chief. This would be a three-year term starting at that point. The salary will be $262,000 per year, plus the same 3% educational incentive, given he possesses a master's degree and a 2.5% educational incentive, given he possesses a post-executive management certificate, plus the same cafeteria plan benefits, and a safety pension, 3% at 50, as equivalent to the Unit 8 Barstow Police Management Association, MOU. With that, we are available for any questions, and then back to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment on this item? I see nobody on the screen? Okay. Councilwoman Rose is now on the screen.
So I do have a few questions. So it's my understanding that the ongoing recruitment to fill the CM's position, it began approximately November 19th, and it's going to end December 27th at 4:00 p.m. It's my understanding that we already have applicants that are, have already started to put in their applications. Extending this contract makes no sense to me, nor is it fiscally responsible on taxpayers' dollars to extend the contract to April because the new council has ample time to review and conduct the interviews, allowing the HR to do the background checks, correct? They, they would be able to once we get the, the applications, the new council would then be able to set the timelines as they deemed, deemed fit once the applications are, well, once the application process closes, correct?
The new council can adjust the timeline as they may desire once they are seated, yes.
And the new council can also hold a special meeting to progress the process, to ensure that we have somebody prior to February 15th when the interim CM's contract ends, correct?
February 5th, and yes. The new council could set special meetings to advance the schedule up further if the new council so desires.
And the new council can also, this is a question, can also, if warranted, could extend the interim CM's contract if they see that the timeline is not going to be met, correct?
If this council does not extend this interim city manager's contract, the new council could extend the interim city manager's contract if the new council and the interim city manager agreed.
So the new council could do all of that?
Correct.
Is it not a conflict of interest with the interim CM negotiating his own contract as police chief because he's his own boss?
No, because the contract is approved by the council. He's not approving the contract as, as police chief. The contract will not kick in until there is a new permanent city manager appointed, at which point his boss, if the council approves the contract, would be that permanent city manager. And as noted, the contract is up for council approval. He can't approve his own contract. The council has to approve it, and that we defer to council.
So during the discussion on page six, it talks about the discussion where the city council unanimously appointed Mr. Espinoza as the acting city manager, also retaining the roles as public safety director and police chief on January 16th, 2024. And it goes down to say that the interim city manager slash all the other titles that he holds, that he can retain his existing additional appointment as police chief or appoint a new police chief as he deciding, as he determines necessary. Is it not true that Mr. Kirby asked to be put in as the police chief and he was turned down?
I'm not aware of that.
My other question would be, what is the fiscal impact? Because I have been asking for fiscal impact on critical issues, on any issues, and, and it's always left blank. Once again, we are asked to approve something with no fiscal impact. Is there?
Respectfully, it's not blank. It's stated in the agenda item. It carries on the next page.
Okay, but respectfully.
Bottom of page 35, fiscal impact, colon, space, the discussion is the next page. The top two paragraphs, lengthy.
I, I get that. But the fiscal impact should be here.
It's there, in the agenda item.
It's, it was simply enough for, for it to be listed on all of this because we're talking about, if you go to page six and you talk about the agreement that we're being asked to approve tonight, has a term until April 1, 2025 or until a permanent city manager is appointed, and it provides a base salary of $270,493.8 plus an additional 3% per month for his educational incentive pay of the master's degree and an additional 2.5 per month. So we have the base salary, but we didn't have on top of that what the 5.5 would be on top of that salary. That's fiscal impact, and we don't have that in front of us. And it shouldn't be my job to figure it out. When this blank here, that should have been added as a fiscal impact. And then the fiscal impact should also have included, if this council approves a three-year contract, as for him as police chief. We were not privy to his contract under the former CM because that position is not, is handled by the CM.
But the contract would be available to any of the council upon request. I'm not aware of a request made for his prior contract and prior services as police chief. If a request is made, it's provided instantly.
So, thank you for telling me that because I had no idea that we could request that. In saying that, so where was he on, where was Espinoza on when he vacated the, the police chief sole position? What tier was he on before he left? Do you know?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
I don't know his prior salary before the current contracts.
I think that's important for us to know in order to make an informed decision as to where he was prior to taking on the additional roles. And he's only served two years and 10 months as a police chief. So he shouldn't be at the top tier, correct?
No, I was at top tier. I was a top, top step public safety director and chief of police.
That, that is correct. You checked the records. That's correct.
You checked his records, Mr. Mayor? You're so brilliant. Thank you. So we don't know where he was at top step, when that vacated, and there's just too many things here that we have not been given to make an informed decision. And, and to be quite frank, we did not make sense, Matthew, because you're the one that brought this to us.
After extensive discussions with closed session. These numbers did not come out of nowhere.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that you're the one that came up with the extension.
As also previously discussed. None of this comes up for me by myself. I don't want to make that point very clear to the council.
So the extension came out of, out of nowhere to extend until April?
No, that was discussed in previous closed sessions.
I'm not disclosing.
And that was the outcome of it. And nor am I disclosing, other than that, the direction was for this contract to come forward to the council.
I'm, I don't want to discuss any closed sessions as you just disclosed. We cannot do that, Matthew. You're our attorney. You need to protect us, please. So was, was his con, was, was the police chief's contract prior to him going into all these other roles, did it include that certificate? Did that contract include the certificate that if he earns it, he gets a 2.5% raise?
I don't have his prior contract as police chief in front of me. We can look that up, though, but I don't know that right now.
Okay, so everything is, we can look it up. We're going to get the information tomorrow, but you're asking for us to, to, to approve. You're asking.
I would defer to the council as to whether that information is critical.
You're asking for us to approve something and then get us the information after the fact.
No, I'm asking you to approve the contract on the agenda. Whether or not to do so is a policy choice preserved to the council. Information regarding his past contract can be provided. We don't have that right now. If that's relevant to make your decision, then the answer is to make a motion to continue.
Then I'd like to make the motion to continue, however.
But first, let's hear public comment.
Sure. How, because, and the reason I'm saying that is because we don't have the supporting documentation to compare the original contract to what a new contract looks like. Because I have another question on the contract. Let me get to it.
While you're looking that up, if the council majority would like information regarding the comparative with the prior police chief contract, we can absolutely provide that. We would need majority direction to do so.
After Councilwoman Rose gets her research in, city manager would like to speak. He's on my screen.
The city manager would like to speak and negotiate his own contract or just?
He would, he would like to speak after you finish, ma'am.
It's, it's a conflict of interest, in my opinion. We're, we're speaking of something that
He is able to speak on his own contract, but I believe you had another question.
I do. On page five of the, of 6B, page five of, of the police chief's contract, is it the norm, because I don't have the old contract to compare, and this is B at the top, "Under retirement and other, and other end of employment, employees shall be entitled to compensation for 100% of accumulated and unused vacation leave." That's a given.
Yes, that's standard.
And special leave. Is this, is also giving 600 hours of sick leave at employees at then-current salary and offer the employee the option of converting unused sick leave to credit as service time for retirement purpose set forth for the schedule of the Unit 8 MOU because his retirement is PERS. Is that the norm, to give 600 hours of, just front-load 600 hours?
That's consistent with the Unit 8 MOU, yes.
And that's on top of whatever other sick leave that Mr. Espinoza would have on the books?
So at the end of his employment, however that may end, whatever amount of sick leave he would have, 600 hours would be converted to cash, and then whatever may be left above that 600 hours would be converted to service credit. And that is consistent with the Unit 8 MOU.
And what does special leave consist?
Special leave would be administrative leave, and I don't, I don't have the balances in front of me. I think it would also include if he had any unused, the leaves listed in the next paragraph. So any unused personal leave, or management leave, or family leave, or bereavement leave, or sick leave, et cetera. And I don't have his leave balance, the figures in front of me. But again, this would be at the end of employment, so it's, we don't yet know what those balances would be.
I'm looking at my notes. So again, we, we don't have all the information that we need to make an informed decision, and this council should be fiscally responsible.
I defer to the council.
And, and the fact that we are trying to do, to do this on our last official meeting as a council, is that the norm?
Not uncommon. And again, I'll defer to the council on that policy choice.
Because there is something in the, in the contract which I agree with, and it's, and it's, let me see, let me find where it is. I've highlighted a few things. Give me one second. So this is on page six of the contract for the police chief, or yeah, for, it was, it says, and this is, C, "Employee should not be, employees should not be removed from office during or within a period of 90 days next succeeding any general municipal election." And I get that. We, that should, that's standard. But this council should not be making a decision that will affect not only the news, it'll affect the new CM because the new CM should be able to make a decision on terms of employment with our police chief. I don't, I'm not, I just don't understand why we are asking to do one last-minute part-in or ditch to get this pushed forward before the new council comes in, because this will affect the new council and our citizens moving forward. And we, and if it's approved, we're tied in for three years. And so would be the incoming new city manager. And I, and I believe that we should look at this, and this is not the norm.
It would be lawful, but I defer to your colleagues.
Yes, I, and thank you. It would be lawful, but it's not the norm. Once again, there's no cause impact. There's no supporting documentation to compare the last contract to this new contract. And it's in front of us, and we don't have anything to compare it to, other than to take it for face value. And I'm not willing to take it for face, face value because we were not given supporting documentation and the very minimum, the easy fiscal impact. We were not given that. And I just want to know why we weren't given it, given us the, the impact.
So the information necessary to calculate the impact is in the report. That matches the city standard practice that the salary's scheduled resolution always states the base salary. The incentives are on top, but not stated in the salary scheduled resolution. We would be happy to provide more information, including the information regarding the past contract as police chief, if the council so directs.
Just give me one moment. I just want to bring up a couple of more. So currently, the interim city manager with the three roles is getting paid $273,493, correct?
As a base salary, yes.
As a base salary, and that doesn't include the 3%, for the education.
With the two incentives on top.
Well, just one incentive so far, because of the, because prior to this, the 273 currently, we haven't approved anything, Matthew.
No, that's his current contract salary, his 273 base.
Current contract is two, base, plus the 3% for the master's degree. It doesn't include the 2.5 because.
No, it does. If I, with respect, it does. The current, the contract the council approved back in January has that, if it provided for the two, the post incentive.
If, if he earned it.
If he earned it, he has earned it, and he provided proof of that to the city.
So he's already earning the 2.5.
Right. He is being paid the 2.5% incentive and the 3% incentive under the current contract right now.
Okay, and so when we were, when were we going to be informed that he had earned it and he started earning the 2.5%? When were we going to be informed as a council?
I'm not sure when the council was made, was, was or was not providing information. You're right. There wasn't a notification provided to the full council in a public meeting, but that's not required.
Yes, there was.
Oh, I stand corrected.
I didn't want to, I don't want to interject when I can't, but I can't.
Okay, so I'm asking.
Hold on, hold on. Just for a moment. Rose, Councilwoman Rose, we, we hold on just for a moment.
No, I have the floor, and he can answer anything he wants to after the fact, and I would ask for that respect. Okay. If it was, if it informed, you know, if we were informed, I'd like to know when, because you don't know when we were informed.
I'm not copied on every email, but we can get that information to you.
And if we were informed, I'd like to know when, and I would be remiss if I missed something. Okay?
We would, we can get that information to you. I'm not sure when the council was informed, but we can provide that information.
And I believe that.
It was also, as I'm hearing, a public presentation at a council meeting.
Yeah, it was a public presentation.
So we can confirm the date of that.
That would be great. So he's making 273, 493, plus the 3%, plus the 2.5% above. That's just the pace, the base pay, and that's for three positions. So I'm looking at the police chief for one job, and that would be at $262,000. So the difference would be $11,493, correct?
Yes.
For one job. It's my understanding that there is no more need for the public safety director. So why is it on, why would you be putting it on this contract moving forward for even if, if, if this council approved it? There's no need for that director, so why is it still on this contract?
Staff recommends maintaining the present set of titles for the interim period to ensure continuity during the interim period. Then it would be dropping solely to police chief.
Matthew?
For the, for the next contract, but it is as council may choose.
You were, you were given directive in closed session.
For the next contract?
No.
Not for the current contract.
This is an amendment.
It is, but the direction was not to eliminate it for the current contract. Again, as noted, there's benefit to the city regarding PERS in maintaining a e, a consistent three positions, three positions for the interim, for the interim status.
So, Matthew, why would we be paying for a safe, public safety director when there's no need for one?
It's inherent in the position. But again, it's up to the council.
But this is an amendment.
Yes, you're amending it to only extend the time, not to change any other terms. That's what's proposed.
An amendment could have changed, made that change as well.
If the council wants to do it and the majority so directs, that's fine.
Matthew, I don't want to talk about closed session, but you were given direction.
Not on that point. But again, everything can be changed right now, where the majority may direct.
There was direction, Matthew.
Not on that point.
Yes, sir, there was.
I defer to your colleagues in the end. The majority will control.
So I will wait till we can do discussion on this. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, then we'll have a public comment.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I apologize for this. I, I asked the council to take a look at this because in my current contract, it says that I have to come to the council between, before 60 days. I believe it's 60 or 90 days. And, and I, I still don't understand why we're talking about February. I took over this job on January 16th. I was asked by the council to do this job because we were in a bind. I was promised in my contract that I could go back to serving as the chief of police and the public safety director. At the time, at the, at the time I took the position, I was making $243,000 as your police chief and public safety director. Mr. Hopkins gave me a 12% increase, which took me to 273.5, some change on there, to do the three, to now take on this, being the CEO or the city manager of the entire city. And I did that. My obligation was for, I believed was for January 16th. I met with the council, and the council asked me to take the permanent position as a city manager. I got a great eval from the council in September. Very high marks from the council. And it was then that the council asked me, would I consider taking the job for another three years as the, as the, and basically that would mean going from a sworn position in the state of California, where I get a lot of benefits as a police officer, like 3% at 50 instead of 2.5 at 55 or 57. I just couldn't do that. And I'm a police officer, and my dream was always to be the chief of police. So I told the council respectfully, I'd just like to go back to my present, or my former duties and, and be the public safety director and chief of police. And the council acknowledged that. And then I asked them if they would take a look at it as soon as possible because we have, we're within the 60 days, and January 16th is coming up right around the corner. And I truly believed that with the applicants we have, hopefully this council would find an applicant. But I also told the council that I would never leave them hanging. I would never just say, "Asta, I'm done at the 16th, and I'm out of here. Good luck. Find, find some help on yourself." I would never do that to that city. The city I love. I've been here for 26 and a half years. I want to retire as a chief of this city, and I would never do that. So I told the council, I will stay, even though I want to go back So, I told the council, I will stay, even though I want to go back as soon as possible to be the chief of police and, and run my department, I would stay to help them. That's where they got to April, because of the timing of recruitment, and if the council does the first poll into 27th, and nobody qualifies, or nobody is interviewed, or nobody is hired, then what do we do? So, they pushed it to April to see, we can even start another recruitment process, hopefully get somebody in there. Members of the council, members of the community, I would like to go back to being the chief of police tomorrow, if I could. I made a commitment to the citizens of this city through a contract, and I was promised certain things in that contract. And as an employee, it, it really is a punch to the gut to see, you know, my service be flushed down the toilet, and frankly, a portion, a portion or a member of the council not wanting to hold up their end of the bargain in a, in a signed contract. So, I earned the public safety job. I do that job. I asked for two percent, because as a chief of police in the state of California, if you make it two years, and you take the, the classes and you pass them, you get an executive certificate, and I asked for that to be included. It was. I earned it in March. A post-representative came here. It's the only time a post-representative ever comes to a sworn, to deliver a sworn certificate. It's only to chiefs. He came here, and he stood right there, and he gave me my, my certificate, which I earned. That's the two and a half percent. I realized that I was doing this job for more money, and I'm going to take a pay cut. I talked myself right out of the public safety director position, because I know that it's not, it's not necessary now. I promoted a great chief, in chiefs of scenarios, who's going to run the fire department. There is no need for a public safety director. I brought this to the council's attention. I, I said, "We don't need this, we could save money." I didn't know they were going to eliminate it while I was still in the position, but so be it. If that's what they want to do, then that's fine. I always thought that we would start at the base, what the contract said, which was chief of police, public safety director, and then work from there. As far as the 600 hours of sick, I'm not asking for anything that's not already given to every employee who is public safety. Remember, I've been a law enforcement officer for twenty-six years. When we retire, if you have a whole year of, of sick life, twenty, eighty hours of sick, you can actually convert that with PERS to time served, and I can leave a year early. What the city does, and they've done it since my dad was here, is you could take six hour, a hundred hours if you want, and you can cash those 600 hours out for cash. And you, if you have a thousand, you could use the hundred, the other 400 towards service time. Or, as I put in my contract, that I could take the whole thousand hours and use it as service time and leave earlier, not take the cash. I wanted the option there, because I'm towards the end of my career, I wanted to serve and finish the things I wanted to do at the department and be done in about two years. Council asked me to stick around for three, if I could, and I'm still debating that. So, I talked my job, myself out of the job of that, and that's fine, and I realize that it's still a, a high salary, but I earned that to get here. I've been a member of this community for all my life, and I'm going to continue to serve these guys and the community at a high level as a chief, and I plan to do that and retire here as a chief. So, that's my two cents. That's really all I have.
Thank you, sir.
One more thing. I don't know, I don't know who else you negotiate. I'm the chief. Chiefs negotiate with either an attorney or the council. I'm negotiating with the entire council. Contrary to belief, I don't work for one council member. You're not my boss. I work for the entire council as a whole. The majority rules, and that's, that's who I work for. I don't have anybody else negotiate. I don't have an attorney. It's me, and all I'm trying to do is solidify what I've already earned moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Yes. Our first speaker is Ms. Marsha Weisma.
Welcome back, Ms. Weisma.
Thank you. Well, it's been an interesting half hour, forty-five minutes, to say the least. What I'd like to comment on is, wow, you guys got yourself in a real bind. You, we did have time, and we should have been looking back six months ago and had this settled and online. We did not, for some reason. Now, we also have a big hole for an assistant city manager. What are you going to do about that, Matthew? But what my comments is, is the public safety officer should have been taken off a long time ago. Nick Denopoli retired. We waited a few weeks, and we got Mr. Sen... Well, you better help me, I forget it. Siron, Sisna, Sisneros. So, he's taking over. So, we've got a public safety officer. The city manager that we had prior to, we had one, I forgot his name, and I'm forgetting it on purpose, because I thought he was very dishonest with the Measure Q people and everything else. Then we get a second one, which was Mr. Hopkins. He did the best he could when the big came in, wasn't really good enough, so he shoves out, we get this city manager. He's having to do everything, but the one thing it is showing is, this is our city government. It was showing the corruption side at its very best, and this council needs to sit back, take control of their jobs as councils, and stop letting the staff decide which direction they go. Now, the whole city of the shitshow with the Humane Society, that's uncalled for, Mr. Espinoza, and the truth was, you wanted your own society, and your assistant did, Ms. Mary Bell. It's wrong. We spent, what, over, close to a million dollars, and it's out of public safety. Nothing's happened. We've had no animal control. And secondly, you spent a lot of taxpayers' dollars. I resent the fact that I have to pay taxes to this city, and we're getting nothing but crap. We have two or three council members that stand up against you, and they're getting shit on. This is welcome to the shitshow, Barstow. It's the last one of the year for this council. I hope you all enjoy it. Be sure and watch Channel Six, and I hope it's working. It's been a wonderful shitshow so far. Thank you.
So noted.
Our next speaker is Mr. Ted Weisma.
Welcome, Mr. Weisma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Confirmation of leave to hours or cash is awful goddamn standard. I've seen it in almost any employee's contract, federal and city and state. It's standard. Nothing wrong with it. Same with the sick leave. There's nothing wrong with what's being proposed. Standard practice. The three percent, the two and a half percent are also something that's pretty standard, and I think highly appropriate. There's nothing wrong with those. And if it's in this contract, it should be. I've got nothing against that whatsoever. I do think, however, that we ought to wait and let the next council make the decision. I hate to see things come to the last moment, the last part of the year, and try to push things through. Having thirty-four years of federal service, I've seen this every single year in the federal service, versus push at the very last minute to get things through. You see it in politics all the time. Lame duck committees try to push things through, but they won't. I don't think it's appropriate to wait to the last moment. I don't think it's appropriate to wait a whole year to advertise for a city manager. That should have been done immediately when you got an interim city manager, and not wait to the last moment again. And city council, that's you to blame for that. If you're doing your job well, you would have made sure an advertisement went out a long time ago, and not wait to the last moment. Take responsibility for your own ineptitude. I did mention earlier, for closed session, my concern with a personal attack, which I don't think was appropriate, because there was nothing wrong with what I said, probably misinterpreted, but I think a professional person would have addressed it differently. So, I'm concerned with that. And I'm concerned with the city and how the police has worked. You've got some very good officers out there, but the leadership, I don't think, has been up to what it should be. Again, when Diane Burns left, I think the whole department went to hell. No more comments.
Thank you for sharing, sir.
E.T. Snell, www.ETSnail.com. Barbara Rose, thank you for speaking up. Mr. Nobles, Ms. Hernandez, you know, you need to join her, and we need to take this and make it available to the next council. Don't rush this through. The, the, the same thing this Rain Man did to the Marriott. Paul, that was a good, you're getting out of town with $2 million. Boy, oh, boy, oh, boy, how you did that, only God knows, but there's a special place in hell for you too. Chief, I'd like you to take a polygraph. I'll say, everybody vote for him and give him... How many times have you lied as a police chief? If you pass that and say none, I give him what he wants. But I guarantee you, on every clown costume and everything I've gotten on, he's lied several times. He lied in my investigation. He's lied several times. Now, you want a police chief that lies, and then he gives this, "I was a police chief in twenty-six years, and my dad, wah, 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 wah." It sounded like a, he was a crybaby, is what he was doing. So, Carmen, Mr. Nobles, and Barbara Rose, this contract needs to be put over to the next council. Don't let Matthew run this through you guys. It doesn't need to be for this council. And Paul, you, you know, you should hang your head. $2 million you got away with? Shame on you. Shame on you. You did nothing for the homeless. You know, you put them in the back burner too. Of course, that comes with mental illness. You know, Chief, the two unarmed, unarmed black men that were murdered under your, under your authority, you know, and then you called the sheriff and told him, "Oh, he gave up my address, wah, 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 wah." And then, all of a sudden, I told him, "Oh, I won't give up his address anymore, that's not a problem." And then what happens? You lied in that investigation. You lied about my tripod. You can't lie in a criminal investigation, Chief, and I'll take a polygraph on that. This council needs to pay attention. This guy shouldn't be there, he shouldn't be part of Barstow, and to listen to his con about how he's a good police chief, and he did you guys a favor and all that. No, let him go get his attorney. You know, when I saw that he overborrowed money on his house, and, yeah, you, I know you're glaring at me, I know you love me, sweetheart, I know you do. But anyway, this guy doesn't even need to be police chief, you know? So, thank you for your time, and let's make it to the next council. Carmen, Mr. Nobles, and Barbara Rose, thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Mr. Tim Silva.
Welcome, Mayor-elect Silva.
Thank you, Mayor Courtney. Council staff, police chief, Mr. Espinoza, thank you for your service. My question, my only question was actually asked by Councilmember Rose, and the answer was yes, this could be held over. So, my recommendation is that you hold this over to the next council, bring back the agenda items or motion for the items, Councilmember Rose, that you were asking for, to get the information that you want. And it sounds like it's going to be a busy council meeting, as I found out earlier, we're going to have the CPDG grants on there. But the good news is, we're going to have an experienced council. Even the seat district four, being filled by a new person, is a person that has attended these meetings regularly. So, my recommendation with the legal council saying yes, it could be held over, is to hold it over and let the new council decide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing, sir.
Our next speaker is Mr. John Williams.
Welcome back, the Honorable Williams.
Thank you. Hey, Chief, we, we all understand what a punch in the gut is, but I don't think that you have to feel that way. I mean, you, you've done some amazing things. I'll go to one of them that I can't say enough about. When you district your police officers for each district to make sure the citizens could understand your officers, I've been saying this forever, it was a brilliant move, because it puts us in direct contact with your officers. Both of these officers were very professional when they took me outside, and I thank you for that. What an embarrassment to have me taken outside. What a slap in my face, so disrespectful to attempt to attack me personally. It's embarrassing. A future councilperson was dragged out of here. Just a few minutes ago, the discussion was going on, Ms. Hernandez, Mr. Courtney, and the city attorney were talking. No one said point of order. No one told them to stop. Earlier, they were talking with each other, and not, no one of you said anything. Then you got to... No one's attacking you, Chief. The people want transparency. They just want the information. They're not, they're not, no one's trying to harm you or make you look bad. You have done your job. You have done a good job, okay?
Those are my lines.
The people understand that. You don't have to feel attacked. That's what our problem right now is, we're all attacking each other. We're not working with each other, and we're damn sure not working for the people. What we're doing is, we're seeing whose, whose chip on the shoulder is bigger. That's our problem here. But if you got 600 hours and you get a contract and they do it, then that's, so be it. It's like, it's, it's good, you deserve everything you get, whatever contract you write, you deserve if they approve it. What I'm trying to do is, first time in our life, we've been transparent. I, I guarantee you, tonight was the most transparent meeting you've ever had. The people, the people run this. It's not you. Chief, for you to say that you don't work for one individual, you work for the majority of the council, I took that as a personal comment to me. I have no personal problems with you. I appreciate the things that you've done. You should never feel you, you are in a situation like that. It's not about, it's not about sucking up, it's just about be, bringing this whole thing together. I told them in closed session, they rushed it, they should have done it, you know, a month ago. They understand where I stand from, but we just don't need people, we just, we got to figure this crap out, and to get upset over a Christmas tree I find for $9,000, I mean, come on, that's ridiculous.
Thank you for sharing, sir.
Our last speaker on this item is Mr. Jim Brown.
Welcome, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Paul Courtney. Jim Brown, Barstow. I agree with you said, Tim. Y'all need to take this to the new council. But the problem I'm having is that you don't have a, what is it? A public safety person that, that we don't have animal control. And what you said at the last council meeting is that you do the hard questions, and the chief said, "That's a easy question." So, if that's an easy question, why we don't... So if that's an easy question, why we don't have animal control? See what I'm saying? You should have had this, when you knew this animal control, dog people were, whatever, were leaving, y'all should have had six months. Y'all should have had something in place, but you didn't. You don't have it. He even admitted it. The chief admitted that he don't have animal control. So to me, that's a fireable defense, because with the, the people running, the people out here with wild dogs.
Mr. Brown.
Wild dogs.
We're actually on agenda item six.
I know.
It's on the police chief.
I know, that's on the police chief. That's on the, he's doing, Paul, he's doing three positions.
You're speaking of the.
Three positions, though, Paul.
Not animal control. You're speaking of animal control, sir.
Well, I switched up. He's, three positions. He's over, supposed to be over animal control. He's the public safety officer, and we don't have one. If somebody get bit, we at fault. The citizens got to pay that bill. So y'all need to get, need to get together and put the, put the fire department back to where it was, put a, get a chief, put him back to where it was, get a city manager, assistant city manager, so we can do the right thing. Victorville, Barstow, they all, Victorville and Apple Valley, they all got their own people in place, and we don't. We got two people doing four jobs. Four jobs. I'm glad this is the last meeting for y'all.
Thank you for sharing, sir.
We have no more comment on this item.
Mr. Matthew, you're the presenter on this item. Could you make the closing remarks or comments of being?
I think I've answered the questions that need to be answered. I'm happy to answer any further questions. I defer to the council.
Okay. On the, on the board, I have Councilwoman Rose.
So now we're in the discussion portion. So I do also want to point out on page six of the contract that we're expected to make a decision on, it says the term of the agreement is for three years. Doesn't have a start date nor an end date, and I understand that the start date is dependent on when the interim city manager is, or the actual city manager is hired. So just that alone, because we can't put in a start date, is premature for this to be in front of us. It is absolutely premature, because we're going to be, if we approve this, there's no start date. What, are we going to come back with an amendment with the new council on something that the old council wanted to push, potentially push through last minute ditch? I just am urging this council to push this item so that the new council can review, so that the new council can, can get the supporting documentation that I have asked for, so that we can get a fiscal impact, and just push it to the new council. Again, if, if the new, once this position closes for the CM on the 27th of December, the new council will be able to review the applicants, set the timelines, and the new council can set the priorities of what the timelines are. If they see that it's warranted, that we may have to extend a contract with the interim CM, let them make that decision. It does not have to be made tonight. This is, again, another decision like we've had in past, like the animal shelter and other items that we have had, that is put into a vacuum, put in front of us, and we're expected to conform to what's put in front of us, yet we don't have all the supporting documentation. If this is premature, we have time, why are we being pushed to do it tonight? I urge these council, or my council members, to please push this to the next meeting so that the new council can evaluate and make the decision. We have time, absolutely have time. I also want to say that Ms. Espinoza said a couple of things, so what, to me, were, you know, he said, you know, if it were up to him, he'd go back tomorrow if he could. And that's a personal choice. You know, he also said that he put in, he put into, he said, "As I put it in my contract," he said, "As I put it into my contract." Did he put it in the contract, or Matthew, did you drop, drop the contract? That just, to me, is conflict of interest. I put it into my contract. I wrote exactly what he said, "As I put it in my contract." What the hell does that mean? You were supposed to be writing that, Matthew, not him. You were supposed to be putting in what this council discussed, that we can't disclose because it was closed session, but there's something in this extension that was discussed that shouldn't be there, and the extension was, as you said it, you felt that the timeline needed to extend. None of us were conferred prior to this. It showed up on the agenda as an extension. And again, I'm urging this council and asking you to please put this to the next meeting so the new council can determine the best process moving forward. I'm not taking away from what Mr. Espinoza has done. He stepped up, he's, 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 you know, did the best to his capabilities, the job that we asked him to do. Asking these questions is transparency. Asking these questions is to, is to say, where's the fiscal accountability? What's the fiscal impact? What was his contract before so that we compare, compare to what it is being presented tonight? We don't have those answers, so we should not be making this decision tonight, because we don't have all the information. Excuse me. And it's not disrespecting the time that he has earned as a police officer, as an employee of the, of the city, but he has not earned two months more extension. He's not earned that. We can give it to him if we wanted to give it to him tonight, but he has not earned that. He has not earned the three-year contract unless we decide to give it to him tonight in a vacuum, without all the information, that we actually need to make an informed decision. He's not earned that. But again, I, the last thing I'd like to say is that we should not be approving this tonight. We should be giving it to the new council, provide it with all the information that they need to make an informed decision moving forward, because if it's approved tonight by this council, it's approved for three years. It's approved without the new council, that it'll affect, not only the new council, it'll affect the whole community as a whole. So this council has a choice, a yes or a no. A no vote will say, "I'm being fiscally responsible. I want to hand this over to the new council. I want them to make the decision, and I want the new council to set the timelines." The new council can do whatever they want on the timelines, call a special meeting, they can extend the applicant pool, they are the applicant, they can extend that window. But it's my understanding, we already have two that meet the minimum calls. So for us to say that, what if we don't, for somebody to say that we didn't, we don't have anybody that's met the minimum calls, we already have a couple. We don't know who they are, but we've been told they met the minimum calls. So I'm asking for a no vote, so that we can give the new council time to review and move forward with best practices, because again, we're being asked to make this decision in a vacuum, like we did the animal shelter, like we did the Marriott, and I'm asking this council to please stand up and do what's right by our city and by the people and by Mr. Espinoza. Thank you.
Thank you. I have the city manager next, and then the mayor pro temp.
Just to clear up, Mrs. Rose's comments about me putting things into.
I have, I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
No, point of order. I'm asking for point of order. I am asking.
I'm still talking, I'm just talking about.
I'm asking, okay, I'm asking for.
I'm still on the talk.
Councilwoman Rose, I don't understand. You said you were finished.
I'm asking for point of order, Matthew. What happens when somebody asks for point of order?
It is in order to ask the person raising the point of order what the point of order is and then resolve it.
What is your point of order, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The point of order is that we are in discussion with the council, with the council, not with the interim CM. It's with the council now. That's the point of order. For us to allow him to keep talking, it's, it's just persuading us, persuading you or you or you or me to say, to do a yes vote. We should, we should already stop the conversations outside of this council. The council, the discussion should be within us right now. That's my point of order.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. City Manager, continue, please.
I'd like to take it to a vote. I'd like to override the mayor's point of order.
So you're indicating we do not want to hear from our city manager? I don't see it as a persuasion. He's simply stating actuals and factuals, not hopefuls and emotional.
I'm just following the Robert's rule of order.
I've said here and here, the personal stuff over and over from you, Councilwoman Rose, so he is only speaking, period.
Mr. Mayor and council, request was made to overrule the ruling of the chair allowing Mr. Espinoza to speak. That request needs a second, and then majority vote controls.
So I'm asking that with the, the discussion is just within the council, and I'm asking for a yes vote to keep it with, I need a second.
Second, yeah.
I need a second to keep the discussion within the council. If Mr. Espinoza wants to make any other discussion, I think he already had that opportunity. This is within the council now. So I need a second. Once again, I stand alone.
Second? Typically, it would just be within the council.
Thank you for that clarification, Matthew. It is within the council now.
Okay. So then I'm in the queue, right?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Thank you, thank you, ma'am. I've listened to this, and we can discuss this over and over throughout the night and stuff. If I'm in order, I'd like to go ahead and just make the, the motion to approve the second amendment of the agreement and the extension to 1 April, and let it fall where it falls.
I'd like to make a subsequent motion. I'd like to make a subsequent motion to delay this until the new council has opportunity to make the decision. I'll need a second. Once again, I stand alone, people.
Okay, with the no, with no second, I believe the council spoke.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could ask for clarification on the maker of the motion, is the motion simply to approve the second amendment, or is it to also approve the police chief contract?
Yes.
In other words, the, the full recommended action?
Yes.
And I'll ask if the second amendment would confirm?
Yes.
With that, back to you, Mayor, for the vote.
Vote, please.
Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion passes three.
Mayor and council, there appears to be an issue with the vote system.
Yes, because it didn't show up complete, complete. All right, okay, we'll do it again, see what happens this time. Is everyone locked in?
Motion passes four with one no vote from Councilmember Rose.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, celebration of, to cancel the city council meeting scheduled for January the sixth. Our presenter is the interim city manager, Andrew Espinoza Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor is a member of the council and members of the community. We brought this for discussion, for you to consider canceling the meeting on January 6th. Although it falls on an actual date where we are back from vacation, staff will not be present because of the holiday season, the, through the week prior to prepare the agenda. Additionally, we will have Councilmember Hernandez absent from that meeting as well. So under the circumstances with the holiday, we were recommending, or a discussion to see if we would like to cancel that meeting and rejoin on, I believe it's the, well, there's a holiday on the 20th, I believe it'd be the 21st of January.
Okay.
Not seeing any, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Rose?
So I have a question. When does the staff come back? When is the holiday, when does the holiday end for, for Christmas?
So they will be, so. So most of the staff will be gone the... We push it, right? We push it. Okay, so it'd be the first, second, and third. We're off on Friday, or they're off on Friday, so they'll be on the, actually, they'll be on the 31st, first and second. Is that correct? Okay.
So who's "we pushed it"? We, what does that mean?
It means that per the MOU, if you have a holiday and you're off that day and the holiday falls on the day, then you, you get the following day or the preceding day or the day after that off.
So is the staff off on December 30th and 31st?
Yes.
When does, when does the holiday start for, is this all city home?
Yes.
And when does it start?
So the last day we would be open would be December 23rd. And then we actually would reopen again on January 2nd.
We do open on January 2nd, because Carmen Hernandez, Councilwoman Hernandez being absent should be irrelevant to this decision, because we would still have a quorum. That would be irrelevant. However, if the staff comes back on the 2nd, and we're at the 2nd, we should have ample time between now and the 23rd to start preparing agenda so that the agenda could be solidified and printed on the 2nd, since staff is back on the 2nd. I don't understand why we would just.
Not, not all staff is back. We have, what happens is, this is a vacation time, so staff, out of the four-day week, they're getting two days off. So staff has requested to take two days off. They could take two days off and get a span of, you know, seven days and burn only two of their holidays. So a lot of our staff request that time off. So I looked at it and I saw that there, we had requests, that there was staff that was gone, and put it on the, for the discussion to see if we wanted to cancel that meeting.
So as the city manager, interim city manager, it's your responsibility to tell staff, you know what, we, I can't approve this, because we have a business to run, so, so we're allowing staff to take time off when we need them.
I believe that's operational, I handle those.
I understand that, but you're asking us to make a decision based on your operational decisions.
I'm asking for only discussion.
So my question would be, why can't, because January 20th would be our next council meeting, correct?
21st.
21st? It's going to the 21st?
There's a holiday on the 20th.
Correct, so we're going to move it to the 21st. So why can't we move our agenda for January to January 7th? That could be an option, correct?
Yes.
Or, or the 8th?
It would be legal if approved by the council.
Correct. I just have a, you know, I have an issue with us not meeting. This would be our last. This would be our last meeting until the sixteenth and then we would not meet for over a month if this council approves this without looking at an alternative date. And over a month seems like a long time to not have this council meet for the business of the city. So alternatively, we could go to the seventh and/or eighth for that matter. Correct? Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm not seeing anybody else on the board, so I'll speak on this. I trust that our, our city manager as well as staff, if there was something that was important or necessary, a meeting would not be canceled and the recommendation wouldn't show up as a council in the meeting. It's, 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 it's very easy for us as governors to make any decisions we want because I'm not one that likes to meet to meet. I like to meet for business, get it taken care of, and that's it. And I trust that our city manager, managers as well as staff operate on the same method of getting things done. So I would encourage the council to take a recommendation of our subject matter expert as well as this subject matter experts.
Is this, uh, questions, word questions?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, here you go. I'm, I'm addressing questions and I'm also suggesting just answer your-
I haven't heard a question. It's point of order.
Okay, here, it's not your opinion or what you heard a question on.
Matthew, point of order.
Okay, here, you, you can keep, you can, you can keep going to Matthew as you want, no problem, but I'm just simply making a statement.
A statement comes with discussion, Mr. Mayor. We're in dis, we're in question right now. When the questions? We are not in discussion, so I'm calling for a point of order.
Do you have anything, Councilwoman Hernandez? You have anything, Mayor Pro Tem, noble? Okay, public comment?
We have none on, on this item. No comment.
Okay, I will accept the motion as well as second. Call for the vote, please.
I, I make a motion to, to propose a alternative date other than the sixth, potentially the seventh or the eighth. I make a motion to, for us to come up with another date. A motion for the eighth. I'm looking for a second.
As apparently decided there's no second, I call for the vote on the first, please.
Who is the maker of the motion? Okay.
Councilmember Cruz, how do you vote? Councilmember Cruz?
I'm sorry, I thought I hit unmute. Um, I vote, uh, yes.
And the motion passes four to one when no vote on Councilmember Rose.
Okay, I believe this takes us where we want to be. Council community reports, I'll start tonight.
Mr. Mayor, there's general public comment before community reports. Assuming there may be some-
Right here on the bottom of this page, I'm sorry. General public, non-agenda public comments. This is the time and place for the general public to address the governing board on matters not on the agenda and within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers asked to leave their comments to three minutes or less. Our request to speak must be received, part of the agenda item, been addressed. If special accommodations are required, a forty-eight hour notice must be given to the city clerk. The city clerk?
Yes, as, um, before we start as well, um, I need to let you know that, and Councilmember Cruz has left the meeting, um, but quorum is still present. And with that, Ms. Marsha Wiesma is our first speaker.
Welcome back, Marsha Wiesma.
Thank you. Um, I have a question for you guys. Cora Harper, open or closed right now? Closed, right? Well, we see little tiny tots can't get enrolled to play sports. So a new parent organization is taking over. Guess what? We lost some of our youth to another organization and that's because they can't get in and register at Cora Harper. Is it open? Is it closed? That's your question, Mr. CM. In the Sunday's paper, there was an ad requesting bids. Okay, that means it's closed. We have already been told by Mr. Leonard Williams and he checked it out, as well as myself, you do have a floor problem, a leak problem. So the roof is bad, the floor is bad, everything else is bad. However, it was open to certain people and you did have it open, you did serve dinner at the parade. What a big, big overspendager for dinner for just a few people in Cora Harper. Now it is closed. It potentially could take as long as the Mojave River Valley Museum, an hour, two, a year and a half before you even looked at the roof. It took that long or longer for the senior citizens freezing in a building that had no heat. Well, almost two years later, Jeff Eason finally got his wish. We did get it put in for the seniors. Unbelievable the way the money is spent, the lies. Get transparent, be transparent. Those of you on council, and you know who you are, that are very transparent, I thank God for you, Ms. Rose, for being transparent, for continuing to keep on going. Carmen, speak up, please. You have a heart. You need to speak up on situations like this that just happened. And all of you need to shape up, work as something. But I can go with Tex and everybody else. Thank God some of you are leaving and, you know, it's the way we all feel. We want our council to work for us and CM, we want you to work with us too, but not on just your terms. Thank you very much. Matthew, you need to work with everybody and not just yourself. And the lawsuits, they need to stop. Hopefully, two thousand and twenty-five is better.
Thank you for sharing.
Our next speaker is Mr. Ted Wiesma.
Welcome back, Mr. Wiesma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do believe we're approaching the end of the year, calendar year, not fiscal year. And I think it's time for you guys to take a review of what you've done over this past year and how you've respected or not respected other people and other council members and staff. And for the new year, maybe you can show a little more respect. Maybe you cannot be so forceful in what you choose to represent or present to the public. I, I think this past year has not been a good year as far as this council has gone. I don't think you've gone beyond the earlier shit shows and I think you need to. Hopefully, this coming year when some people will be gone, that'll be better. But those that are still there, come on, do a little better with respect for each other and help each other. We need that. And beyond that, I gotta say, have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and have a good time with your families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mike Hernandez.
Welcome back, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, sir. Earlier, when I asked the questions about the Marriott contract and the amount that you directed me to go to city manager, well, I went to the finance director because the city manager doesn't have the figures that she has. That's her job, is finance, so I go directly to her. Unfortunately, I can only talk to her on Monday because I don't know what's on the agenda until Monday and the city is not open. And she has meetings that she has to go to, so sometimes we don't touch base until late in the afternoon. And that doesn't give her an opportunity to give me the information I asked for. To go to the city manager and ask him for the information, he still has to go to her to get the information back. So I try to make it easier. I try to, to give a heads up to staff whenever there's an item that I want to discuss. So that's why I do that. I probably will always do that because I like going directly to the person that has the knowledge. My main thing is, the, there's a cannabis shop out in Lindwood that for over six to eight months has been producing polluted air. The citizens have complained about it. Nothing's been done. The people have been cited, but code enforcement has not done anything to bring it forward. Now, I honestly believe you should terminate their city license and get them, close them down. They've had ample time to put the equipment in to improve the quality of air for the people in Barstow and basically for the people that go shopping out in Lindwood because that thing spills of cannabis all the time. And I hear from a lot of people that they can't pass that place without getting the odor of the cannabis. We, the council set a policy, it's not being enforced. My problem is Chris is in charge of code enforcement. If you can go out and harass people about their grass, their weeds, you should be able to go out there and close those people down. This has been going on for months. I complained to the air quality board because I felt this council wasn't doing anything. It was brought back to them, they were cited. Still, nothing is done. Why should people, taxpayers in this community have to put up with this? You approved it and you put things that they had required to do and they have not done them yet. When are they supposed to do them and why are they still open? Why hasn't those businesses been closed down? Only you can direct staff to do it, the council, whether it's this council or the next. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Ms. Teresa Tank.
Welcome, Teresa.
Teresa Tank. Good evening, Mayor, council and staff. Mayor, you took me by surprise after I spoke at the last meeting when you asked who I represented and what my title was. I have been the one constant person speaking about the animals, animal control, citizen safety and the ever-growing budget up now to at least one point zero six two million dollars at the one hundred and six thousand dollar payment for, uh, November. The fact you stated at the last council meeting, the AC has been and is a priority if the council didn't sabotage the efforts, was a bit funny to me. It took the city fifteen months, which includes the six-month notice that the Humane Society gave to end their contract, even bring up AC to the council and public. And I believe the only reason why it was brought up then was because in April, Route sixty-six gave notice themselves that they could no longer operate after June thirtieth. The city has demonstrated it can fast-track when they want to. Two months from the RFP to presentation in June and one week for the staff to come up with a proposal for the city to run animal services. Last meeting, Councilwoman Hernandez said that there was an announcement coming about the shelter. Still waiting to hear about that. And what's the cost analysis proved, which is now past the forty-five days? Things can be done in a fashionable timeline when the city wants them to be done, but unfortunately, the public's comments about the stray animals, lack of AC, public safety have all been ignored by the city and you, the council. I'm sorry, but I don't consider fifteen months, let alone twenty-one months, the city making animal services a priority.
So noted and thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Anna Fuzey.
Welcome, Anna Fuzey.
Thank you. Um, Anna Fuzey, Barstow Senior Center, president-elect for two thousand and twenty-five. I wanted to share with you, San Manuel was here and we were, I was really happy to see them. They were very generous in their donation to the Barstow Senior Center for our holiday meals. And with that, we served fifteen hundred home-delivered meals. We served two hundred and thirty-five at the center. We had over six hundred shaving kits, three thousand pairs of socks and a bunch of other stuff that we were able to give back to our community. But I'm really grateful that San Manuel stepped up. Um, with that, Barstow Senior Center is still looking for CBG or, uh, Measure Q money and/or, um, the community proposals that we put in. And I wanted to thank Tim Silva, who was there, also there volunteering with us. We had quite a few community volunteers. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing that.
Our next speaker is Mr. Etis now. Our next speaker is Mr. Tim Silva. Our next speaker is Mr. John Williams. Our next speaker is Ms. Sonia Ray.
Hi. Um, first off, I want to update on my, the situation with my grandmother. The police department was very quick to respond two days later, but when they did finally respond, this is not a knock on the police department because it is not their job for animal control. They were doing probably more important things, um, which I would know of, I know they are, but they did respond. The situation seemed to have been taken care of. It's been two weeks since the dogs have been in my grandmother's yard. The dogs were in my grandmother's yard that week of the meeting, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And Wednesday is when the police officers did respond for that again. They were very nice about it. My sister had a talk with the owner. The owner apparently got rid of the dogs because we haven't seen them, so kudos to that. But my grandmother swears she's seen an animal control vehicle that was labeled animal control city of Barstow. So I would like to have some clarification because I know tomorrow morning she's going to be calling me, asking me what the city said about the animal control truck that she's seen. Uh, the next thing I want to, uh, talk about is, I'm going to talk about the Christmas tree. I love Christmas. It's my favorite time of the year. Twenty thousand dollars on a Christmas tree. We said, it was said it was coming out of Measure Q. My question is, why wasn't it on our list of expenditures? Because everything else seemed to be, but I didn't see anything about a tree. And then also, is that coming out of the community development, community promotion? And how much of that money do we have left? And, uh, for reference, that's on page seventeen of the adjusted adopted budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, so noted.
That is all the comments we have.
Okay. Public safety updates. Far chief.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council and community. Uh, just kind of giving you guys an update. We're kind of coming into the holiday season, speaking of Christmas trees. Definitely, we've seen an uptick in our recent structure fires, uh, obviously, uh, being sparked in the, uh, homeless population with them housing themselves in some unoccupied buildings. So putting the community at risk, uh, over the last couple of weeks, we've seen that uptake. But as far as the Christmas trees, obviously, we're coming up on the one-year anniversary of, uh, the significant loss of the Isom family out on St. Lawrence with the double fatalities of the two children, which significantly impact the firefighters and the families. But that was involving a live Christmas tree. So the emphasis this year is maintaining your Christmas trees and ornaments within safe manners as well as presents, storage and all the other good stuff. Also, uh, we're- as presents, storage, and all the other good stuff. Also, with that, Christmas light installations, please be aware of the heights we are working in. Personally, I had to take my dad to the hospital this week because he fell off his ladder. So just be careful trying to install those Christmas, Christmas lights and decorations. But besides that, oh. So, you know, obviously, kind of keeping everything safe and safe and sane, so to speak, within the holiday season. Also, you know, if you see something, say something. If you see the homeless out there with encampment fires, we're seeing they're starting the warming fires. And last night, we were chasing some out in the middle of the desert, and we actually got an engine stuck. So we had to get it towed out. So we're starting to get ourselves impacted a little bit with out there in those far-reaching encampment fires. But anyway, that's all I have from the fire department. The district is continuing recruitment. We're seeing some interviews this week. So continue recruitment.
Thank you. CD, manager, comment?
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, let me hit some of the things that the committee had some questions about. Cora Harper, Cora Harper is open. We are accepting signups for basketball, but it will be closed on 12/12, so December 12 through January 10 to repair the court. But it's only the court. So the rest of the community center will be open to the public and still serving the community in that way. But we will be replacing that floor and getting it up to, up to, up to date. The cannabis camp, I know that we had some information provided today that I wanted to update council on, as well as Mr. Hernandez. Actually, Building 21 is the one you're talking about that had the major problems that we were very close to having a hearing to revoke their license. At the last minute, on 11/20/2024, an inspection was done by our code enforcement officers, the Barstow Police Department, and AQMD. Building 21 has officially installed its odor fogging system, the system that is recommended by the city. And AQMD confirmed the foggy system was permitted and inspected and was good to go. That leaves us with five notices that we had given in August of 2024. Of the five that were inspected as well on the 20th, five of them have already, no, I'm sorry, out of the five, two have already installed the system but are pending the AQMD inspections. So that leaves us with three that we need to, to deal with. Right now, they have bought the foggy systems. Now we're waiting for installation and inspection for those five, for those last three. So that, that hits that, that we are making progress. And really, the one that caused the most problem is up to, excuse me, yes, the tree lighting event. I'm a, I'm a big Christmas fan as well. December 6, this Friday, 2024, at 5:00, at 5:00 PM right out front. I'm not, I don't remember if you had a question specifically about that. Was glad to hear that the officers went out there. We did talk about it the very next day. Forgive me, the officers are, are not used to being animal service officers, but the officer in that beat took a note, took the time to meet with the owners of the dogs and actually work through the problem with them and just advise them and educate them on it's their responsibility to keep their dogs enclosed as the owners in their property. So just doing the quick fix, we, we were, we participated in helping getting the fence so that they wouldn't go back under. So taking the time to do that, the beat officer did a really good job. It was Officer, that was Officer Delta, I believe that went out there. So I was glad to hear that you were pleased with his service. The expense run, the reason that it's not on there is just because it was the cutoff date. When we run the expenditure sheet, sometimes with the cutoff date, they won't make it on there, probably see it on the next one. And as far as the City of Barstow Animal Control, it was reported out by our city attorney. We are making progress. We will have something for you on the next meeting. And the City of Barstow does own an animal control truck that is parked up, up top. So you may have seen that going for service. And we are hoping to see that. I'm optimistic to see that in service by the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, council, community reports. I'll start to my far right. Councilwoman Rose.
So this will be quick. The Homeward Bound meeting is scheduled for December 11, 5:00 PM here in the city chambers, and we're asking for warm clothing, blankets, socks, anything that we can provide to our homeless and anybody that's in need. The rules and policy meeting that was scheduled for November 26 was canceled, again, for lack of quorum. And I was really sad about that again, because it's been the last two meetings, lack of quorum. So as we move forward with a new council, it is my hope that when we are on these committees that, that we're committed and that we show up so that we don't have to continuously cancel the meetings. And the next meeting for rules and policy is going to be canceled because that's scheduled for 12/31, or is it the week before? So that is also going to be canceled. So the rules and policy meeting committee has now been canceled for three months consecutively. So hopefully, like I said, with the new council, we will look at these dates and ensure that if, if a meeting needs to be rescheduled, that we will, so that we're not canceling all these meetings. Thank you.
Mayor Portin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of, the Military Affairs meeting, next one would be on the 10th of December at Los Domingos, and that'll be at 8 o'clock. And then the Victor Valley Transit meeting for the 16th has been canceled for the holiday. And the next scheduled meeting will be the 21st of January of 2025. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Hernandez.
I have a San Bernardino Transportation Authority meeting on December the 4th, and the Southern California Association of Governments on October the 5th, and then the Homeward Bound, that was announced by Councilwoman Rose. And that, that is it. Mahavier Quality has been canceled for the holidays.
Thank you. I have a meeting for the CAF California Investment Forum, which will be in Los Angeles on Wednesday at 11:30. And that's been it for committee. Okay, business of the council. I'll start to my far right. Councilwoman Rose.
So I would like to announce that the Barstow Humane Society has a bike raffle. Thank you, Ms. Wiesner, for providing this to the council so that we can let the public know that they had a secret Santa donate two children bikes for the Humane Society to raffle off. All proceeds will go to the animals in their care. Starting to date, it will start until, excuse me, starting today until December 15, you can purchase your chance to win one, one of two bikes. $5 for one chance, 10 for three chances, and 20 for 10 chances. If you have any questions, you can reach out at barstoshelterfundraising@gmail.com. And I will provide this flyer to Ms. Hernandez so that we can maybe just put the word out on this fundraiser for our animals. Thank you. I, I would like to know, first of all, speaking of animal control, Ms. Teresa Tank, I totally concur with everything that you said this evening, everything you've said. In regards to the cannabis air quality, Mr. Espinoza said that on 11/20, their Building 21 was inspected. I was just out there this weekend, which was day before yesterday, and the air quality, if I would have sat there for 30 minutes, I probably would have gotten high. It was that thick. It smelled of cannabis. And so we, as a city, need, I understand that there's others that have to, that have to be inspected. But I saw a family with three children as I sat there to see where, how the wind was blowing and how bad it was. And I was sitting there waiting for a hamburger. I wasn't there to check the air quality, but it was in, it was so thick. But there was a small family with three children, and the three children were covering their mouths. And these are people that are coming to Barstow. So we really need to continue to, to do this, to do the inspections. And if they are not meeting the code that we have in place, we need to close them. Close them like we wanted to close the Humane Society. Close them down. Get our code enforcement out there and do that because this is not a good image for Barstow, and it is certainly not an atmosphere that I want our children, any children from our city or anywhere else, to be in while they're shopping, getting a hamburger, or whatever they're doing out in our, in the outlet malls. I would like for us to, to give, to provide the process to Mr. Ted Wiesma on how he will obtain the 911 call. Mr. Wiesma, please let me know when somebody has contacted you with that process. You know how to get ahold of me. The Fire Protection District, Mr. Cincineros. I was on there today, just going through, periodically, I go and I look at job opportunities, et cetera. I look at our webpages. The fire, the webpage hasn't been updated. It still has Mr. Former Police Chief, Fire Chief Denopoli and his welcome letter. It's a great picture of him, a great welcome letter. But, but I was just wondering, you know, whose responsibility that is, because I'm sure that you have a wonderful welcome, welcome letter that you want to present. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And I also want to get the status on the VVT, the VTA, status on the bus routes, particularly Arbor Way. We stopped the bus route on Agarita with a meeting with, with the VPTA on Agarita because somebody that lives on that street, of who that person is. And I said it last meeting, I'm going to say it this meeting, it doesn't matter who the people are on those streets. We have a safety problem on Arbor Way, and I asked, and I'm asking again, that we get them to cancel those buses that are flying down the road, narrow street, a danger to everybody that lives or is visiting our Arbor Way. And I'm asking for us to cancel that bus route immediately before somebody is killed, hurt or killed, and we have a liability on our hands. Lastly, I look forward to working with the new council. I look forward, and I welcome our incoming mayor, Mr. Tim Silva. You are going to be bringing some great decorum to this council that we have needed for four years. I also welcome Mr. John Tex Williams. The knowledge that you bring, that you have been, you've been coming for four years, is going to be greatly needed. I believe that this new council is going to be a dynamic council. I believe that we're going to work well together, and I believe that we're going to change the culture of what we've seen for the last four years. I am so looking forward to it. I want to congratulate both you individuals as being the successor of this 2024 election. Thank you.
Mayor Portin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. City manager, can we just get with Mr. Goldman and just check what the status is on the Arbor Way to see if we can reroute the, the buses for that particular one? I know we had the discussion and stuff, but don't know what the status is, okay? Tomorrow, on the 7th of December, the commanding general out of Fort Irwin is going to be having his meet and greet for the Christmas tree lighting of, out in Fort Irwin. And the new council members that are coming on board, I just need to get an update. Are you going to be able to attend? The invitation has been opened up to you if you want to attend. And if you can let me know before we leave tonight, I can let Protocol know that you're going to be attending. And I'm not sure about the other council members. You should have received an invite from Protocol on the attending of the CG's visit, and also the tree lighting ceremony that's going to happen afterwards, the 7th of December. And that's going to be between 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock, and that's going to be at Sandy Basin's Community Center. And just to confirm, our tree lighting is on the 6, correct? And, and what's the time? And I believe that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you. The issue of cannabis has been a longstanding complaint that I have tried to address. And I've had Mahavier Quality inspectors come out to monitor that. And I'll never forget because Mr. Williams, when I was a council member for my first meeting when I was sworn in, there were 27 cannabis applications that I said were an issue at that time, and I will never forget. And the issues that came up as far as completion of applications, and that the planning commission was supposed to come back to us, Councilwoman Rose, that was your recommendation. It has been a long-term issue that needs to be addressed because originally, I was told the other ones were in compliance, and we only had that one out of compliance. And now, I'm glad our city manager has let me know. It's a larger problem that we need to address, especially as a new city council, making sure that they are confirmed and that they are being fined. So I am looking forward to that. The other thing, issue, is Measure Q. That is a big issue with the community. And I think, as an annual thing, we should make a list when we're doing our budget about the specific expenditures, long-term, that are present in the Measure Q expenditures, what the new expenditures will be, what the recommendations are, and what they're going to be used for. This generalization shouldn't be, then, it's ambiguous. You can use it for anything you want. And I think that's what's happened, that we've gotten into this situation where we said, you know, it's for community funds. So I think we need to address that as being more specific. The Cora Harper Center, that has been an issue, whether it's the heat or the cold. And especially when they're going to have the Gems and Minerals show that is coming up. What are the dates for that specifically?
That's going to be December 6, 7, and 8, but it's actually going to be held at the Harvey House for, because of that reason.
Okay. And that, that's my issue. When people ask, you know, about the Cora Harper Center, we say it's open. To me, it's not open, in my opinion, because if you don't have heat when it's cold, and you don't have cold when it's hot, and, and people aren't able to use the facility as they normally would, I think we need to be more upfront about that and say specifically, what is it that is happening at the Cora Harper Center? I know we had our employee, and it was cold in there. So I don't want anybody to presume that we are fully open. We're not. We're still under renovation. So I'm glad you explained about the, the floor. And about expenditures, about the Mardi Gras dinner, Mayor-elect Tim Silver, I think we can hopefully clarify that because we never had those expenditures in the past. So I'm looking forward to us addressing this issue. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, many did witness a very interesting meeting this evening. Well, many did witness an interesting meeting this evening. I do want to address a few things. I want to make apology to Councilman Tex Williams on something. He heard me say, you hear a lot up here that you don't hear out there. When you were asked for the page numbers, when you were making the request, that was information that I was getting from up here, asking for the page numbers, asking for the page numbers. If you recall, I never asked for the check number. When anybody comes up to the mic, they're talking about whatever, I didn't ask for check numbers. However, he had heard a request about when someone shows up, asking for a page number, that I was asked for, then all of a sudden, I'm being bombarded, for lack of a better term, asking for a page number, asking for a page number. I didn't even know the page number. However, I was just simply chairing the meeting and asking you to comply. That was it. The reason I, I have emphasized to you, Mr. Williams, once you get up here, you, you will be in for a real-world awakening on what goes up, on up here and what you hear. I'm sorry, what was that? I, I'm trusting that we will. But, but the nice thing about it is, I will be sitting out there where you're sitting. You'll be sitting, I believe, in one of these chairs up here, and I'll be able to ask you the appropriate questions based on experience and reality, not based on being vindictive, mean, or whatever other things that you witnessed. Yeah. What's that? Of course not. Well, but, but that was no intent nor malice behind that. Okay, well, I'm just letting you know. To, I don't see Mr. Snell sitting, I guess he's out. He needs to understand, and perhaps I should ask this question to the city attorney, the $2 million, was that due us, due to me, or? I never received that. I'm like, what?
I have no idea what Mr. Snell was talking about with that one.
Okay. And I wasn't sure, and maybe that's going to be the bonus in the, on the 16th. I'm not really sure. Let's see. Those who are present got to witness our staff, specifically our city manager, be inappropriately talked to, addressed, and called, called inappropriate name. And I'm like, wow. Moving forward, I trust that the new council, under the stewardship of our new mayor, Mr. Silva is going to be able to stand the reality of sitting in the big seat. Because if you recall, Mr. Silva was here for 14 years, plus two additional years, and now he's been absent for two years, now he's back. So I'm, so I'm looking forward to that, that, that wisdom and experience for our city. Because I, like most, am engaged in the city, stakeholder in the city. Just to be very transparent, between my brother and I, we own over 30 different properties in our city, so I am a stakeholder here. I've done well here my entire life. I was doing well before I became mayor. I start doing not so well once I became mayor, because I found out there's a lot of things I can vote on, I can participate, and I can purchase. So after December 16th is our very last meeting, I'm actually looking forward to it because on December 17th, there's lots of properties that I really hope to acquire to help build a better Barstow for all of us. I encourage engaged members to be at the December 16th meeting because the old councils will go out, and the new council will come in, and we'll be delivering our farewell chit-chats. And I have one. I have one. Let's see. I want to make sure I'm not missing anything. And with that, if there's no objection, it is 10:25, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.